Brenda, yeah, so what happened? You call the meeting to order, okay? And then when you're ready, Fair TV will put us on. And then do the pledge. Okay, we go send the pledge and then item number three to nominate and elect officers for 2021. And then start with the chair. And then once that's complete, the chair will take over from there.
Okay, very good. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. And I see that we are recording. Can we rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The third item is to nominate and elect officers for the 2021 year. Do I have a motion for chairman? Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Can you see Mr. Walsh?
I made a motion. Oh, okay, motion, go ahead. Do you have a microphone?
Yes. Ms. Kupchak, this is Jim Walsh. I would like to make a motion. I think it's an honor to nominate our current, our former chairman, Jim Brown, as our new chairman for this coming term. Jim has been a great chairman. And it's a difficult thing to deal with, with COVID and flexible schedules and being online. And I think he's done a phenomenal job. He's also one of the fairest guys I know. I think, I think both parties, members of both parties would agree that Jim has done a great job and is running in a bipartisan manner. And I think he'd be great to nominate again. So I'm giving my nomination to Jim Brown.
Is there a second? Go ahead, man.
I second Jim's nomination of Jim Brown. I agree with everything that Jim Walsh just said about him, including that Jim is extremely patient with us and puts in tons of time to try to answer every one of our questions. He's knowledgeable, he's experienced, and he does a wonderful job at this. So I'd like to second Jim's nomination.
Are there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing none? The nominating process is closed for chairman? All in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous? Congratulations, Mr. Brown. And you will now take over the meeting, I suppose?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Kupchak. I appreciate you starting us off and getting the nominating process going. I want to thank Mr. Walsh and Ms. Leclerc for the nominations and their second. And I'll have a few additional words to say after the nomination process is complete. At this time, I'd like to nominate our vice chair, vice chair for 2021 for the Board of Finance. And I'd like to nominate Mr. Chris DeWitt. And Chris, Mr. DeWitt was the former vice chair. And I want to thank Chris for all he's done for this board and for this town over the past year, including running two committees, purchasing and budget. He is, I want to thank him, as I believe we all would, for his leadership with the senior and disabled tax relief. Chris is always willing to take on additional projects as needed. He's always willing to get on the phone and talk to anybody and everybody from any board to get opinions and feedback and to provide his own. He is definitely committed. He's balanced, independent thinker. He does his research. And again, he won't hesitate to get involved and assist where needed. And for me personally, I greatly appreciate his advice and assistance to me and to this board. So may I have a second? Mr. Testane?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to echo a lot of what Chairman Brown just had to say about Chris DeWitt. This is Jack Testane wanting to second the nomination of Chris DeWitt. I think we'd all agree that he stepped in at crucial junctures, both as Chairman Brown alluded to, and also substituted as chair. And want to thank him personally as well for a lot of the work he's done on behalf of the couple of committees that he's involved with as long as the rest of the board as well. So I'd like to second the nomination of Chris DeWitt for vice chair of the Board of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. Testane. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor of Mr. Chris DeWitt as vice chair of the Board of Finance for fiscal year 2021? Say aye.
Aye.
It is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. DeWitt.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Chairman Brown and Mr. Testane for the kind words. They're very much appreciated. And I look forward to another year as helping this board get through another successful budget season.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. We are looking for a nominee for secretary for the Board of Finance for fiscal year 2021. Can I have a nomination, please, for secretary, Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris DeWitt. I'd like to nominate Mary Leclerc for secretary. Mary is our former secretary. Mary has judiciously run our audit committee for more than a couple of terms. And she does a great job at that. That is a really tough job. And a lot of times it's behind the scenes. It's not in our open forum, but it's a lot of work. And I very much appreciate all her time and efforts. I appreciate the guidance she's given me. Mary is the longest-serving member of our board. And again, I appreciate her time and all her expertise. And I, my honor to recommend and nominate her for secretary of the Board of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. May I have a second? Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's an honor to second Mary. Being new to this board, I've known Mary through her years of service. I've known her outside of politics. And being new to the board and dealing with her institutional knowledge and the years of experience, she is just an invaluable member. And I value her service. And I know all the taxpayers of Fairfield do also. So it's an honor to second.
Thank you, Mr. Bateson. Are there any other nominees? Okay, seeing none? All those in favor of Ms. Leclerc as secretary of the Board of Finance? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Leclerc. Okay, that concludes our elections. And I just want to say a couple of words as we move into this next, really, season. And we all know our budget season will be fast approaching. I just, I want to start by thanking this board. And please know I appreciate the opportunity to serve you as chairman. And you have my commitment that I will do my very best. And I know we're all committed to doing our very best for the residents and taxpayers of this town. And I appreciate the work that this board has done over the past year. It was obviously very difficult and challenging. We did have 35 Board of Finance meetings from December 1, 2019. And that'll take us to December, probably 15th or 16th of 2020. Eleven of those meetings were special meetings. And then we had eight regular meetings and 11 budget meetings. And we'll have our capital meeting and four quarterly. So I look forward to working with you all another year. We know as we head into this budget season, we know what we're heading into. And at the end of last year, we started, I'm talking about the budget season. We talked about our cliffs. And we know our cliffs are just right there waiting for us. And they are steep. You know, for example, OPEC, our fund balance, our bonding, and we have the non-lapsing account for the Board of Ed, just to name a few. We also, we know what our priorities are as a board and what we think we will need to do to work together on with other boards, meaning such as protecting our AAA credit rating, our fund balance to remain within our guidelines, our funding or pension to ADAC, funding OPEC, adhering to our internal bonding policy. And at the same time, we need to provide our town services at a reasonable cost. This is what we're up against. And this could be a tough balance in so-called normal times. And we don't see COVID fading away for at least six months. We know it'll have an effect on us as a town throughout, well, at least the most part of 2021. So I'm looking forward to, as a board, working with the first selectman, select woman, Ms. Kupchak. Look forward to working with you as we go through our process. And I look forward to working with your administration. I also look forward to working with the Board of Selectment, the RTM, the Board of Ed, and the other boards and commissions as we wade through Work to our Solutions. So, you know, I think we have a well-experienced and excellent board. And again, I look forward to working with everyone over the next year. And I look forward to working for the taxpayers and our residents. And that's what we're here for. So, thank you all very much. And with that said, we'll get on with our agenda unless anybody else would like to make a comment before we do.
I would, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Kupchak?
Thank you. I'd just like to say that obviously we had a tough year last year, my first year. And we had a global pandemic. So hopefully, you know, I'm reminded of some of the comments I made the night of my inauguration about policy over politics and results over ranker. And I'm hoping that all of us, not just my administration and the Board of Finance, but all the boards, that we can work together for the community as a whole and to treat each other with respect and the utmost decorum during our meetings so that the public can have trust in our ability to work together and that we are treating each other in a civil and respectful way. I think that's important for all of us as elected officials, to portray that trust and to have decorum at all of our meetings. And I look forward to working with everyone. I know we're gonna have a lot of challenges ahead. And we may not always agree with one another. But I always, I hope that we will always be respectful of one another and differing opinions. And so here we go, kicking off the 2021 budget year. It's going to be a lot of hard work. And I look forward to working with everyone.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Kupchak. I appreciate your comments. And I am entering my 12th year on this board. And, you know, I've found this board to be always well-meaning, asking tough questions, doing what we all think, as you do, Ms. Kupchak, best for the taxpayer and for the town. I agree that we all need to work together. And I would just stress that, you know, I think our board has always acted with the utmost professionalism, even when things can get heated and things can get tough, as they have over the past year. But, you know, in the end, we're all doing what we think is best for our town. So again, I do, we do look forward to working with you and the other boards as we wade through these challenges. And what we do know, I think what we've learned is the uncertainties, right? And the unexpected. And we don't know what we're gonna walk into 30 days from now, much less six months from now. So we learn to adapt and to move forward. So, fresh year, brand-new year. And actually, we do have two more meetings this month of December, which is somewhat unusual. We have our capital planning meeting on the 10th, and we will have a special meeting sometime, I believe, the week of the 15th, 16th. We'll talk about this at the end of our agenda tonight for giant steps. So again, thank you, Ms. Kupchak. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none? We'll go to item number four. The Board of Education, review of public school withdrawals to private and homeschool settings. This is referring to a question that was asked to the Board of Ed from one of our board members, Mr. Walsh. And I appreciate the Board of Ed being here tonight to review that data. We have Mr. Mike Cummings. We have Dr. Parrish, Executive Director of Operations and Processes with us. I believe, okay, Mr. Peterson is here with us. And I thought I saw Ms. Vitale, but maybe I did not. I thought I saw her here, at least for a moment. But, Mr. Cummings, I'll turn it over to you to lead us through this or to assign someone to take us through this data.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mr. Brown. I'm gonna have Dr. Parrish, who's been putting this information together, speak to the information request this evening.
Good evening, Board. Zakiya Parrish, Executive Director of Operations and Processes. So the initial chart was per request to provide the number of students who have withdrawn from Fairfield Public Schools and have gone to private schools or have withdrawn in order to be homeschooled. So that information was provided in terms of withdrawals as of October 23rd. I did note that the OOD All, that's out-of-district-all, that column cannot be added to private and homeschool to generate a total. The initial request was to identify the numbers by grade. But in adding up those columns, you basically double count the private school students, those students who have withdrawn to private schools. So that out-of-district-all includes all the students who have withdrawn to another state and those who have withdrawn to another district within the state of Connecticut. That's inclusive of both private and public. So that's why you are unable to add the 211 to the 105, because in essence, you're double counting some of those students. I will note that the private school students in this particular table includes not only those who have withdrawn to private schools out of state and also private schools that are within the state, but also those that are within Fairfield. So that's inclusive of all three types of private school withdrawals. And so that particular information was provided as of October 23rd. Like I said, the request at that point was to break it out by grade. And so that's why you'll see the numbers provided in reference to each grade level. A second request was submitted in November, and that's the second table. That one is as of November 17th. This is inclusive of all types of withdrawals. So you have homeschool, and I broke out private, religious. Those are those students who have gone to a private school within Fairfield. That's a religious institution. Private, nonreligious, again, within Fairfield, the city of the town of Fairfield, that are nonreligious private institutions. Out-of-district-private, nonreligious, out-of-district-private, religious, out-of-district-public, out-of-state-public, out-of-state-private, both religious and nonreligious. We did have a few that withdrew and moved out of the country. And then a few that withdrew and enrolled at a charter or magnet school. So this request was put in to submit this information by month. And so you are able to total these up because I did separate out those who were in the different types of private institutions versus those that went to a public school, both within the state of Connecticut and outside of the state. So the total as of November 17th across all types of withdrawals was 376.
Thank you, Dr. Parrish. Just a quick question. So at this point, how many students do we have in our school district?
I do not have the exact enrollment in front of me at this point in time. I can look that up, but I don't have the exact enrollment. I will say that we have had additional registrations this year. I did pull some data to compare this year and last year. And as of the end of November for last year, 2019, 2020, we were at 261 new registrations. As of this year, by the same date, we're at 331. So we do have additional registrations this year, July 1st through November 30th. But I do not have the exact enrollment numbers right in front of me.
Okay. That's good information, though, to know how many students have come on into our district as opposed to have just withdrawn. All right, thank you. I'll turn it over to the board, Mr. DeWitt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris DeWitt. Thank you, Dr. Parrish, for the data. It's very helpful. On the second chart, the total's 376. Trying to figure out how to phrase this question. Of all the children here, what amount are still a financial, is there any other financial burden still on Fairfield? In other words, clearly, the children that moved out of country, we're not busing them to their schools. But some subset of these children, the town of Fairfield is still paying for transportation and such, correct?
I would assume that there's some transportation for those that may have gone to a magnet school or a charter. But if they've moved out of district to other districts, then no, we wouldn't be paying for their transportation, per se.
But if they went to a private school within Fairfield, do we not still have an obligation to transport, or is that not true?
That I'm not sure of, of how the transportation is provided for private schools.
Mr. DeWitt, excuse me, it's Mike Cummings. I'm wondering, is your question around the question of which of these students might be outplaced?
I guess that is, I guess that is what I'm asking, Mr. Cummings. Thank you. And, you know, I'm just curious of the 376. You could look at this list and say, you know, well, we don't, 376 children are no longer in our school system, so there's no financial burden on the overall tax base. But I think, I think that's the right word. So the outplaced students are a subset of these 376, is that correct?
They could be. It depends on the nature of the outplacement, and we'd have to get that information to you. Oftentimes, when students are outplaced, they remain, in a sense, duly registered, both in their outplace school as well as in their homeschool. And we'd have to get that information and break it out for you from Mr. McUsy.
Okay, I'm just curious of a, you know, a round number, to be honest with you. Again, Dr. Parrish, thank you for the information, very helpful.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Ms. Marmian?
Thank you, Sheila Marmian. Thank you for the information, it's very helpful. I'm interested in understanding how this data compares to last year, for example, because there's going to be a normal, you know, people moving, people moving out of the country. That's kind of, we're gonna see this regardless. But how did some of these numbers compare to last year, pre-COVID? That's question number one, especially for, we go to private schools in the ninth grade. We know kids often move into private school in the ninth grade. I'm assuming this is specific to withdrawal, maybe in October they withdraw. But I'm not really sure. That's question number one. And then number two, do we have any documentation in terms of the rationale for the withdrawal? Did they say, COVID, I'm concerned about the public schools, I'm moving to private, or I want to get a religious education? Like, what do we know in terms of the rationale for some of this change?
So I'll answer your second question first. That's not information we typically collect and put into our database in terms of why they're withdrawing or where, you know. We do collect where they're going because it's a part of the, you know, the requirement that we have to track where they're going in terms of progression towards graduation. But the nature, per se, of why they chose to leave isn't something that we collect and put into our database. In terms of comparison from last year to this year, I haven't run the same chart that I ran for November 17th for last year. I did run the October 23rd chart and compared it from last year to this year. And so for the, for example, the entire number of students who withdrew for private school in the 2019, 2020 school year was 120. And you can see that on the chart that I provided for October 20, as of October 23rd, we were at 105. So there was definitely a significant increase, just in terms of timeframe. We still have the seconds of the year to go. We have seen a drastic decline in the number of withdrawals. But there was an increase from one timeframe to the next. And looking at the, just those that went from private school last year to those going to private school this year. And then also for homeschool, there was an even greater increase. We had six that were homeschooled, that withdrew to homeschool last year, last school year. And as of October 23rd, we were at 57.
Yeah, I can definitely see the drama, the dramatic change from the homeschool. I'm really interested in the private school because I think there is a natural, you know, that happens in certain grades. If you can send us those, you know, last year's equivalent charts, I think that would be very interesting, just to see where the natural churn is versus, you know, potentially that COVID impact. I would appreciate that, thank you.
So which chart are you referring to? The one that was sent October 23rd? Because they're configured differently. So that's why I would need to know exactly which one you wanted to see for last year.
I mean, I'd open that up to the board. I mean, I think they're both quite interesting. I like to see where the people are going because I think with the November 17th one, people, you know, naturally move out of district and they move into district. And then they move out of state, et cetera. So that's quite interesting to see if that's, if there is significant change. And then grade by grade to the October 23rd one, I think would also be interesting. I'm just looking at what the natural changes versus what might be COVID-related. If that would be easy enough to get, I'm not sure. You tell me.
Well, the one, the October 23rd, is already available. I thought that that was initially shared with the October 23rd chart. But I think apparently in the handout that you all were provided, that was not included. So that's something that I can easily get to the board.
We have that for this year. I'm talking to compare it to last.
That's what I'm talking about as well. When I submitted, no, it's not in your packet, I don't see it there. So that's what I'm saying. It was when I submitted them, I submitted both of them. But that's something I can easily get back to the board again.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Marmian. Thank you, Dr. Parrish, for getting that information to us. Mr. Mottolo, you have a follow-up, then I'll go to Mr. Testane.
Hear me, I'm sorry. I just want to make sure I understood what you just said. Last, as of last October, last, not this past October, but last school year, October, 2019, if I heard you correctly, there was 120 students who left to go to private school. Is that correct? Is that what you said?
No, that was for the entire school year.
For the entire school year? Oh, okay. And right now, we're at 105?
As of October 23rd, yes. It was at 105.
And do we have kids typically in the middle of the school year leaving to go to a private school? Does that happen a lot? I would imagine that doesn't happen too often.
I would have to pull, like I said, mentioned before, I didn't pull the data for 1920 by month. I just looked at it globally by grade. So I'm not sure what the months were that people were withdrawing. were that people were withdrawing. Um, so that would be something that you would have, that would have to pull that information in order to answer that question.
All right. That'd be great to see that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Metola. Mr. Testani?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, Jack Testani. I just have a couple of quick follow up questions, Dr. Parrish. Um, thanks again for the information. I just have a quick question on what you said, if I wrote this down correctly, was it three hundred and thirty one new registrations for this school year? Is that right?
Correct, from July first through November thirtieth.
From July first through November thirtieth. So it's almost a wash. Would that be fair to say?
Correct.
Okay. And let me ask you this. I'm just curious. That seems like a high number to me, but I don't know previous years. Is that where we were last year for new registrations?
Last year, as of between July first and uh November thirtieth, we had two hundred and sixty one new registration.
Oh, it's almost a hundred more. Well, right, it's like eighty more, something like that.
Correct.
So um, do you have any tracking of where these new registrations came from? Do they all need transportation? What, like where? I'd like to have an idea of what that may cost the school system. I mean, obviously, we've lost some, right? So where does that correlate with regard to what it may cost the town with regard to the new registrations?
I have not tracked their transportation needs. This this data that we pulled simply tells me when they came into the school system versus when they left, but it doesn't indicate if they have transportation or not.
And does it indicate where they came from? Was they moved from another town? Did they move like, like we're tracking here in this chart, right? Did someone move to another country and move out of state? Do we have any data to tell us where these new registrations came came from?
Most of them are from within the state, but there are some that are external to the state.
Yeah. So maybe if you could get us information on what the new registrations may cost with regard to transportation, maybe helpful to know where they came from. Certainly, it's reflective of an uptick in real estate transactions, which I know we're all going to discuss later, but certainly an indication of, um, you know, where what's been happening in the town as far as some of the new real estate information is concerned. So, thank you. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to make sure I understand. You want the transportation cost for the new registration?
Possible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. Uh, look, Mr. Walsh?
Dr. Parrish, good evening. Uh, then thank you for your hard work on on these uh two pages. I appreciate it. Um, I just want to start off with the um, the first uh original, I guess I would call it, withdrawal report dated as of October twenty third. And just one of your acronyms. What does LEA stand?
That's the the learning, that's the, I can't remember the exact um, it it's not my acronym, it's a state acronym. Basically, it's the the town of Fairfield.
The local, excuse me, it's Local Education Agency.
There you go.
It's a local, excuse me, Mr. Walsh, it's a local education agency.
Okay, so in the third bullet down, um, it says attend a public or private school in a different LEA. You mean different than Fairfield, the town of Fairfield?
Correct.
Okay, great. And then in the chart below, I've read, I heard what you said earlier tonight. I just want to make sure you completely understand it, because this out of district all includes out of district other and out of district Connecticut, correct?
Correct.
But it does not include private? Doesn't include private?
It does include private. If you're talking about the October twenty third chart, it does include private. So the other note that's there, right under that bullet, is that private withdrawals includes those that are within Fairfield and outside of it. But then the one after that says adding the two basically double counts the private school numbers. So the the private school numbers is included not only in the O D D all, but also the O D D other and Connecticut, because you have some uh students who withdraw to a private school outside of the state as well as within the state.
Okay, so I can look at this and look at the out of district all column and look at the bottom through October twenty third, total people that, total number of students that had left the district was two hundred and eleven.
No, because it does not include those that may have gone to charter or magnet or out of the country. Those are broken out separately. They're coded differently. So the original request didn't ask for extensive information, but the second one did. So that's why the November twenty third data set is is more broken out, and you can actually um do a sum for those totals, for those numbers.
Okay, but if I switch to the November seventeenth report, under charter and magnet, the total was one and one. So there's two people, two students there.
Correct.
And both of them were done before October. So that would make that thirteen. And then the other category, I'm guessing, other than charter and magnet was what, Catherine?
I'm sorry?
Other than, other than charter and magnet.
Out of the country?
The country. Is that listed on the November seventeenth report, the out of country?
Yes, it's right above charter.
Okay. So before October, there was only two students that left there as well. So in essence, I can add four students to the two eleven, and it's two hundred and fourteen students, two hundred and fifteen students, excuse me.
And it does not also, it does not include homeschool. So you would have to add that to it as well.
But that is homeschool for those months was approximately thirty, forty six, fifty, another fifty six. So about two seventy five approximately would be by the end of October. And then, okay, so the, when I go to your November seventeenth chart and I look at the total students that have left, it's three seventy six. So in approximately a month, we've lost another hundred students between October and November.
No, in the month of November, that's, so the November chart is broken out by month. The previous one was not. It was broken out by grade, and it went through October twenty third. So within that timeframe, the rest of October and part of November, there were additional students who withdrew. So there were twelve total in November, forty three total in October. So at the very bottom of the November seventeenth chart, you can see by month how many students withdraw, withdrew from the district regardless of what type of withdrawal it was.
Okay, so that leads me to the question of the November seventeenth report shows a total of three hundred and seventy six students, correct?
Correct.
Just a thing ago, I kind of walked you through the October twenty third, and we came to approximately two hundred and seventy five students in the categories that you have on, and adding back private, charter, homeschool, and and out of country. I've added all those back, and I come to two seventy five. I'm wondering where the hundred students go when really November's twelfth?
Because you're also forgetting that the private that's on the October chart is inclusive of those that are in private schools within Fairfield. So that one hundred and five, that's for private, is inclusive of those that are out of state, out of um, out of Fairfield, and also within Fairfield. So there are three types of private school withdrawals, with local, within the town of Fairfield, within the state of Connecticut, and then external to the state. Some of those numbers are not included in the out of district all two eleven.
Okay, I misunderstood that. So when you have done the October twenty third report, you have out of district all a total of two hundred and eleven, and I thought it made up the other three categories. But what you're saying is that it makes, it's it's really only out of district others included into the two eleven, out of district Connecticut included in there. And and the private is just separate?
It's inclusive of some of the private, but not all of the private.
Okay, okay.
So they're very different setups, so you can't really compare them per se because of the fact that the way the the data was requested for October, it wasn't broken out specifically by type of withdrawal. So doing a straight comparison between the two, you will double count in some instances.
Okay. All right. Um, what do you consider to be the private schools that are located within the borders of Fairfield?
So Fairfield Prep is an example of one. Um, drawing a blank as to the others at the moment, but that's the one that I know off the top of my head.
Okay, Notre Dame High School?
If it's within the town of Fairfield, then yes.
Okay. Um, and then all the parochial schools, correct?
Correct.
Okay. But private schools outside of Fairfield would be schools such as St. Joe's High School, correct?
Anything outside of the town but within the state would be included in that out of out of district, private or public, I mean, private, religious or nonreligious.
Okay. So as an expert in this area, what do you think the data points show here?
Um, well, I wouldn't say that I'm necessarily an expert in the area, uh, but I would, I would say that as a result of what we were able to see, that there were a significant number of withdrawals within the months of August and September, and that the majority of them went to homeschool, private withdrawals, as well as some um, out of district withdrawals.
And you don't have a comparison to do either October or November, where we were at the same point last year, right? So we can compare apples to apples?
I do not.
Would you be able to get us those numbers for October and November?
That was what was just previously requested.
Okay, uh, that's fine. So that's that's good. Um, Mr. Cummings, um, is that your opinion as well? Do you have anything additional to add on what these numbers show you as the um head of the district?
Um, I would say, uh, Mr. Walsh, that what it shows me is that we have parents, you know, parents and families are making decisions, um, given the um, current educational environment environment related to the pandemic, um, that they're making, they're, the parents have always had choices a- as we know. And I think that given the current conditions of the pandemic, people are more often, parents are exercising um their, those choices. Um, particularly, I think, as Dr. Parrish pointed out, that the great increase in the homeschool, um, you know, I have had some conversations with some of these parents around this. They um, they essentially put in a request to homeschool, and and a number of parents have reached out to me that says, you know, this is kind of where we are right now. It's it provides, um, excuse me, a stability of structure for them that, uh, right now, the schools are not able to offer. Um, it gives them some comfort in terms of safety precautions. So there's a number of reasons that's driving this, um, you know, those types of issues. So I I think it really reflects, um, again, parental decisions in light of the pandemic. And I would say that just based informally on conversations that I've had with area superintendents, I think this is a a trend that's happening in across the state. The state I know is looking at this attendance data as well, community by community and across the state to see what's exactly happening. Because there is, um, I, you probably are aware, but there's a great concern that quite a number of students have have withdrawn and people can't track them. That's not happening in Fairfield, but that's a great concern across the state.
Do you think people are leaving the district um because of the hybrid format that we have and want to go to seek out schools that are more um in school more?
Yeah, I would, I would say that that's a choice. Parents, if parents um want their students in school more often, if they can do that, that they're, that's something that parents will do. And I think, as I said, I think there are parents who um chose the home environment because they wanted the, you know, kind of the opposite, the the um full assurance of safety, as it were. So, um, but I think that that's a valid conclusion.
Okay. That's all the questions I have, Mr. Brown. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, anything to add, uh, Mr. Peterson or Ms. Vitale? Mr. Peterson?
Hey, Jeff Peterson. I just wanted to say, uh, we're always happy. And I thank Dr. Parrish for putting, putting these reports together. Uh, we're very happy to break this out however you want. We we understand that it's a a a theme in discussions uh, uh, as we, as we've moved through the year. So it's, it's absolutely, it's something that is of interest. Um, just please let us know exactly what you want, and and I I think we will do our best to accommodate.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Yeah, Ms. Vitale?
Hi, Christine Vitale, Chair of the Board of Ed. Um, I think I just want to reiterate um, for the, really looking at the homeschool numbers, especially for kindergarten, first grade, the lower grades, I think that for next year, we may see, you know, a bit of a bubble. This is happening statewide, just those those younger grades, either parents holding their children, um, not starting school, or just keeping them home. Um, just because we understand that, um, you know, being in any sort of hybrid or remote, or just the unpredictability for the younger grades, um, is not really surprising, given the pandemic. And I think that, in looking at these numbers, that's what really struck me, the homeschool number for the lower grades. And as Mr. Cummings said, it's really happening, if you look at the state data, happening across the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Yeah, I, you know, Mr. Walsh's last question was, what does the data tell us? I think that will be, probably we'll know in time, right, over the course of the year. And then when this pandemic is over, it'll be interesting to see um if these trends continue, or if this is just a blip, or if they reverse. So, again, yes, uh, Dr. Parrish, thank you uh for presenting, and I want to thank the Board of Ed for being here. And um, I don't see any other questions, so we will bid you farewell to the Board of Ed. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Have a nice evening. Good night.
Leads us to item number five, quarterly financial review follow up on the fire marshal fees and building permit fees. So this item stems from our discussion, as so does, as does item number six, from our quarterly meeting, uh, just a week ago tonight. And this, uh, the reason that we are interested in the fire marshal fees and building permit fees is the variance that we looked at last week with the fire marshal fees, which looks like the revenue is marked to be down three hundred thousand dollars for the year. So we had a question on that, as well as how is this affecting the building permit fees, and if there's a relationship or correlation, or perhaps none at all. I just want to thank, uh, Mr. Schmidt for getting this information to us on a kind of fairly quick notice, especially with a holiday week with Thanksgiving. And it, you did a good job getting as much as you can to us over the course of seven days, but really about three, and we appreciate that. So with us tonight on court, on item number five, we have Chief McCarthy, and we have our building official, Mr. Tom Conley, as well as our CFO, Mr. Schmidt. I see Mr. Bremer is here, and I don't think I'm missing anybody from that room in Town Hall, am I? Just you two?
Hey, Caitlin's also here.
Okay, Ms. Bossy's here, our controller, Controller Caitlin Bossy. All right, so welcome, everybody. So, Mr. Schmidt, I'll turn this over to you and uh take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and I do want to set this up, um, because I I do want to the chief and Tom Conley to to speak in more detail, but uh, just to go back real quickly, and you touched on it, there was a, we noted a, what we think is going to be a three hundred thousand dollar shortfall in fire marshal fees on a number that we had budgeted of five hundred thousand. And so, but but before uh, before those guys speak, I just want to say a few words and to, uh, you know, something for you guys to keep in mind. Number one is that this is a, this is the first quarter, uh, again, and it, so it's early. Uh, these numbers could change, and I think you're going to hear that message uh from the next two speakers as well, that uh, things are a little bit uh unpredictable at this point. Um, and a lot of the things that will drive that are are outside of our control. Um, there's not, not a whole lot that we can do about it. And so, um, you know, and also to keep in mind that these are, in the grand scheme of the budget, these are, these are relatively small items and are part of a small items and are part of a larger budget, obviously, that is in, uh, you know, given the, uh, the things that are going on around us and, you know, sort of instability and unpredictability that are, you know, the budget overall is in pretty good shape. So we're, you know, we're honing in on this one aspect and a couple of others that we'll talk about later. But I just wanted to, uh, you know, just rea-, reassure everybody that the, the budget as of this time is in, is in pretty good shape, and we're just, you know, we're looking at a couple of smaller things that are going on. And with that, I will hand it over to, uh, Chief McCarthy and to Tom Conley to give some more detail about what they're seeing with, uh, with regard to permits. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Uh, Chief?
Yeah, good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of, uh, the Board of Finance. Uh, thank you for having me tonight. Uh, I'd like to provide a thumbnail sketch of our fees, uh, particularly over the last three years, uh, but, uh, honing in on last year and this year as a way of comparison. Um, if you allow me, uh, please let me, uh, you know, recognize the three members of our Fire Marshal's Office, Fire Marshal Phil Higgins, Deputy Fire Marshal Jeff Edmondson, and Inspector Hank Ferentz. Uh, these three guys work day in, day out to service, uh, the commercial clients, uh, that we collect fees from, uh, turning over, uh, construction plans for permitting and approving that in the shortest possible time, uh, to keep the economy moving forward and the construction industry moving ahead. They work hand in glove with the Building Department, in particular with, uh, Mr. Conley. And at the same time, they recognize, uh, our obligation to do routine inspections of existing buildings. And, uh, they spend their entire day, uh, many days foregoing lunch, um, and running from appointment to appointment, uh, to keep up with the workload. So I want to recognize, uh, their dedication to the mission of the Fire Marshal's Office. What, uh, Mr. Schmidt had provided you is a list of the fees that have been collected over the, the past five years. Uh, I think you have, uh, a sheet that shows, uh, in 2016, uh, before we instituted the new fee structure, uh, that our, uh, fees collected for permitting and inspections were in the low $20,000 range annually. Um, in the August of 2017, we revised, through the Board of Fire Commissioners, revised the fee schedule, adopted a fee schedule that's similar, uh, but not quite as, uh, rich as the building official. Uh, $5 per thousand of construction costs up to $5 million, $250, uh, $2.50 on every thousand above $5 million. Um, and you can see that in 2018, 2019, 2020, uh, the numbers have jumped dramatically, reflecting, uh, those new fees. What those numbers also indicate is there is not a trend in commercial construction. Um, we can't use a three-year rolling average, uh, for this type of work because, um, there is not a, a defined pattern. Certainly, we haven't been at it long enough, um, collecting fees for just commercial construction, uh, to reveal a pa-, a pattern. Uh, but certainly we've seen, um, the construction at Fairfield University and Sacred Heart University in particular, uh, generate a majority of the income that we have received, particularly in 2020. Um, so there is a, a challenge that we have, uh, when we develop our projections for revenue. It's in consultation with Mark Barnhart and Economic Development, James Went-, uh, Jim Went and Planning and Zoning, uh, Conservation Department, and, uh, uh, with Tom Conley to compare notes and look at what is on the books, um, and what is in the queue for, uh, commercial construction. Uh, we then estimate, uh, based on knowledge of similar projects, what kind of revenue those projects, uh, those new projects might, uh, uh, provide. Um, and we provide, uh, to the Board of Finance, um, our revenue projections. Uh, it's, I, I want to note that, um, in 2020, the $610,000, uh, that we, uh, collected in permit fees were generated, uh, in three, uh, excuse me, two-thirds of that, 410,000 came from 13 projects. Uh, out of the hundreds of permit fees that we, uh, collected over the course of the year, uh, 13 projects that ranged in permit fees from $15,000 to $48,000, uh, produced two-thirds of the income that the department re-, uh, received, or the town received. Um, so you can see that it's a very small number of projects, um, that are affecting, uh, the revenue generation. Everything below that, um, that $15,000, um, and a majority, and we did an analysis for the Board of, uh, Fire Commissioners a year after we started, uh, fee collection, uh, the majority of permits are in the 2,500 to $5,000 range, uh, very few between, uh, 5,000 and 15, and as I mentioned, um, you know, a dozen or so that, uh, ranged between 15 and, and $50,000. So the, I, that brings us to 2021. When we, uh, provided the, um, revenue, uh, projection for this fiscal year, uh, we looked at the projects that were in the queue, and I have them listed there for you. Um, Fairfield University Convocation Center, uh, they anticipated, uh, breaking ground last year. Um, and, uh, when we put the budget together, they expected that they were going to delay a year, but they would break ground in the spring of '21. Uh, the hockey arena, uh, same thing, uh, expected, uh, this year, and the rest of the list. Uh, and, and we felt that these projects, um, although affected by the economic realities of COVID, uh, were still, uh, very strong projects, are well-developed, um, uh, with, uh, plans, uh, uh, that had been presented to the town, at least, uh, preliminary plans. And we felt that, um, given, you know, conversation with developers, uh, and internally with the partners that I mentioned earlier, uh, that we felt that all of these would, uh, end up going forward, uh, the new one being obviously all the, and, um, the former Coles Building. But the rest of them all had, uh, a certain amount of, uh, uh, ground speed to move forward in this fiscal year, and we, we certainly expected that they would be delayed. Um, but some of them, majority of them, uh, would, uh, move forward in this year. Um, and they still may. Um, there, it's very difficult to predict, uh, just when all of the conditions from financing to permitting to neighborhood opposition, um, and the like, uh, will align to allow a project to move forward. Uh, but all of these are very strong projects. Uh, I would imagine that most or all will be built. Uh, the matter of whether it happens before June 30th or after June 30th, uh, is subject to speculation. Um, but, uh, we really need another couple of months to provide a better picture of where we will be in revenue projection. So if in 2020, 13 projects produced two-thirds of our income, or over $400,000 worth of income, uh, the projects that I have listed there have the capacity, uh, to meet our budget, uh, revenue projection, um, and, uh, we will have a better sense of whether we will meet that projection or come closer to that projection, um, you know, mid-February into March. Um, with year-to-date revenue of $44,000, uh, at the time that we're asked to provide an update to the Finance Department, um, it was, uh, me being very conservative in projections, uh, really could not, uh, anticipate, um, you know, or guess, uh, whether, uh, projects will come to fruition. I'd rather be conservative than, uh, liberal in, in, uh, those projections. Uh, but I really need a, another quarter and a half, uh, uh, to make a better projection because of the conditions that are affecting these projects. And with that, I will pause if there are questions, or if you want to hear, uh, from Mr. Conley, um, on the Building Department, uh, fees.
Thank you, Chief. Before we go to Mr. Conley, um, we'll see if there's any questions, but I appreciate your, your presentation and your review. Um, Mr. Dewitt?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris Dewitt. Uh, Chief McCarthy, thank you very much for that data. Um, I'm looking at the numbers and, and, and I agree with you. Last year, fiscal year '20 was just a, a booming year for, for, for the, um, amount of, um, fire marshal rev-, fees that we had coming in. And, and, and I couldn't agree more that that's an outlier, and you shouldn't be averaging up to next three years and saying, no, it's 450,000, because it isn't economically driven. Um, but I, I also want to go back to, uh, Mr. Schmidt's comment. Um, we've all been doing this long enough that we know that the first quarter is just a, you know, kind of a, a shot in the dark. But, you know, maybe it's just me, but, but I would expect a number like this, um, you know, to have a, you know, have a little bit of a gut check on it, you know what I mean, Chief? Because when, when you tell us, um, I think I'm going to be $300,000 less than the budget, which is $500,000, that number's lower than your 2018 numbers. In 2018, I mean, we were probably doing okay with building fees. So I guess for me, um, and, and I understand why you'd want to be as conservative as, as possible, but, yeah, again, just for me, this is the reason we're, we're, we're here tonight, because, because that number was, was, was just so large. So, um, that's one thing. Uh, two, in, in last year's budget, we, we debated long and hard as a board, and, um, and my friend, Harry Ackley, God bless him, as Fire Commissioner, called me every other day and said, we need that, we need another marshal, we need another marshal. And we, we had lengthy discussions in open about, there's just so much fire marshal work that's not getting done. Um, are, are you saying that the fire marshal work that's not getting done isn't the mon-, isn't the stuff generating fees? Is, i- is that true? Or is, is there really not that much fire marshal work?
So, um, I think that Mr. Schmidt had also provided, uh, you, um, an internal document that we use to, um, review what our fire marshal, um, workload is. Um, and, but before I do say that, let me recognize, uh, um, former Commissioner Harry Ackley, former captain, Fire Marshal Harry Ackley, uh, who dedicated 50 years of his life to the town of Fairfield in a variety of capacities, um, and all of you work with him, uh, he will be sorely missed.
Agreed. Thank you.
And respect, uh, his contributions to the town, and we, we stand on his shoulders in the Fire Department, uh, as, uh, we do our work. Um, so what our challenge is in the Fire Marshal's Office is we are paying customers that are paying 15, 25, 50, 60,000 dollars, uh, in permit fees to break ground and build buildings. We have an obligation to them, uh, to, a legal obligation to do a plan review in 30 days. And you can imagine the scope of, uh, anybody who's familiar with construction knows just how complex, uh, those plans are, um, and what a burden that is to review each page of that document. Because once the building's built, it's very hard to correct those problems. It's a lot easier to correct a line on a piece of paper. Uh, so we put a lot of effort, uh, in, uh, in reviewing those documents and meeting the expectation of those paying customers, um, so that they can keep their projects moving forward. Uh, we also have a State of Connecticut, um, state mandate, uh, to inspect, uh, in the list that you have, um, all of the residential properties, uh, which includes all the dormitories, all the, anything above a two-family, uh, all the condominiums, all of the assisted living and nursing care facilities, uh, where people sleep at night, uh, when they're the most vulnerable. Um, we have to inspect annually all of the educational facilities, all the liquor license, uh, uh, facilities, daycare, summer camps, and assemblies. The, that's 585 buildings of various sizes and, and complexity, uh, that have to be done every year. Um, we are getting to those that are required to have a permit. Um, we are not getting to many of the non-permitted residential properties, and that's what keeps me awake at night. Um, in addition to that, all of the properties that have a biennial, or biannual, uh, uh, biennial, um, inspection requirement, have to be done every two years, or the ones that every three years. So, uh, the lower hazard ones like office buildings and, uh, retail, uh, facilities are, have a longer, um, inspection period. We are not meeting those obligations by a long shot, uh, or we're falling far short. And that was the basis of, uh, our request for two new inspectors. I, I, I want to be clear that when we developed our budget last year, and when we developed the fee pa-, the fee structure, it was specifically intended to offset the cost of additional staff in the fire marshals. That's the reason why we did it. Um, it was, uh, demonstrated to be, uh, a pathway to provide revenue to accomplish that. Uh, so last year, we, you know, pushed hard, um, to, um, have that included in the budget, and I know that right up to the last moment, uh, it was included, uh, in, uh, the Board of Finance's considerations. And a, and a question was raised last, uh, at your last meeting, is what if we had, what if you had approved that position, uh, and at the end of the budget process, uh, what would have been, and, and, and seen the fee structure, uh, revenue dropped off? I want to, I'm responsible for a good stewardship of the budget that you give, that you give the Fire Department. Uh, and I can say, quite honestly, that we would not have hired, certainly that position wouldn't be funded until July 1st. And knowing what we knew in June about the budget and about the, uh, in, uh, COVID and its impact on the community and the revenue stream, we wouldn't have filled the position on July 1st. We would have kept that money in abeyance and, and had discussions with the administration about it when and if it is appropriate to fill that position. It's not covered by minimum manpower. Uh, it is a position that would be funded, um, but not necessarily, um, required to be filled. Um, and I think that that is the responsibility of the Fire Department and the administration, is just because we can, doesn't mean that we should. And I can, uh, and quite confidently say that that's how I look at, uh, my responsibility as Fire Chief, if it was approved in the budget and the bottom fell out as it did, that we would put that pro-, that, that position on hold.
So if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, um, and, and I appreciate that, Chief, and, and, uh, I appreciate your, your good stewardship of the budget, and I, I think you've, I think you've demonstrated that to this board especially. So thank you for that, and thank you for, reminding us about, about Harry. Um, so I think the bottom line is, and, and maybe I didn't phrase my question enough, but when you're not doing all of these things that are listed here, going and doing all the things you just listed are, is not going to make up that revenue. That gets back to your two-thirds of the budget is kind of based on big projects. So, right?
So when we put the fee structure together, it was in the, with the express intent that we would charge more than many of the communities around us, um, East Hartford, uh, Westport, and us, um, other departments, uh, to a lesser degree, uh, have an aggressive fee structure. Um, my philosophy has been, um, let's charge that money upfront when it's under, when the building is under construction, and, uh, that will pay for the life of the building of inspections. construction, and that will pay for the life of the building of inspections. That if I'm going to charge $60,000 for a dormitory at Sacred Heart University, I'm not going to go back to them every year when I'm doing an inspection, and charge them $100 or $200 or $1,000 to complete an inspection. I'm going to get that money upfront, and it will allow me to do the work that's necessary every year. Because, as I mentioned earlier, we had planned for that funding to allow us to hire the inspector that would be going out and doing that inspection in the dormitory year after year after year. We do not. So there are very few, in our fee schedule, and I don't think that you have a fee schedule, there are very few mechanisms for us, other than the permit fees, to collect fees. You know, we do, for daycare, group homes, healthcare facilities, theaters, liquor license, temporary liquor permits, we charge a fee of $100 or so for those inspections. For residential inspections, mercantile, office inspections, we don't go back and ask for a fee, or charge a fee. We're looking for voluntary cooperation in meeting the fire code, and, you know, it's very difficult to get voluntary cooperation, because it costs them money. Fire inspector shows up, it's going to cost them money to fix or repair, it may be a broken exit light, it may be an emergency light pack that needs to be replaced, it may be something that may require inspection enclosure of hazard. Our goal is voluntary compliance with the fire code. We abate, we send a written order, and we follow up on inspections. To charge a fee on top of that puts us in a really precarious position with the business owners. We don't want to be nickel and diming the business owners who are struggling, especially the small businesses, to comply with the code.
Well, thank you, Chief. So I just learned something. This is my 14th year, and this is the first time that I didn't know we were charging anything other than on the initial building permits. So if I may say, the way we charge is, you pay upfront, and all the maintenance is included, all the oil changes are included for the rest of your life, right?
Good point.
So, yeah, right, simplistically. But that structure is going to work out just great, and by the way, this will help me in the budget, because I never knew this before. But that structure is really great when there's housing, when there's housing booms, you know, the superstorm sanding comes in, all these building permits, and Sacred Heart is building like gangbusters. But if we start tailing down, we're going to have to, we're going to have to adjust that number accordingly. So when the town is built to the max, that number is going to be significantly reduced. Well, thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it.
I don't think any of this is, you know, a permanent solution. I think that we adjust to market conditions. Certainly, we're in a position right now to take advantage of a construction boom. We only derive fees from commercial buildings. We don't do any of the permit fee for residential. We don't inspect residential, other than three-family or greater. So our fees, and one of the other issues that came up at your meeting previously, was why the difference between the Building Department and the Fire Department? Fire Department only derives fees from commercial construction, three families or better, or commercial buildings. We can't offset with the boom that is occurring in residential construction. We don't collect any fees, we don't do any inspections on that, and I'll let Tom speak to that directly. But that is the difference between our permit fee structure and the Building Department, where one may be up in one year and the other down, that might offset. We have no offset. If there is no commercial construction, or limited commercial construction, our revenues will go down.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dewitt. Any further questions for Chief McCarthy? Mr. Walsh?
Good evening, Chief McCarthy.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Walsh. How are you?
Good. What was your methodology in coming to the $300,000 negative variance in our first quarter numbers? Like, what made you come to 300,000 out of your 500?
So we had conflicting information, and since your meeting, we've clarified, again, with that internal work group, about some of the construction that might occur. But we had indication was that the projects at Fairfield University were not going to go forward, the project at Sacred Heart University was not going to go forward, Mr. Conley has different information. But we certainly saw the two biggest drivers of our fee structure, the two universities right now, holding back. Conversation with private developers that were doing big housing projects, particularly on Thorpe Street, and others seemed to be stalled. They did not give us good indication that they would move forward prior to July 1st. They may or may not. But, you know, some of the biggest drivers in the, we had little confidence in some of the biggest drivers in our revenue projections. And we're at $44,000 after the first quarter, compared to the previous year, which we had already collected, I believe, somewhere over $200,000, $250,000 in the first quarter. We were woefully behind in real numbers in the first quarter, and indications were less than firm on the biggest drivers in revenue for the balance of the year.
All right. Because it makes it look like, you know, on your revenue, the one that's titled Fire Marshal Fees and Upcoming Projects, the revenue discussion, the list of projects, it kind of makes it seem as though 60% of those projects were not going to be completed.
Say that again? 60 were not?
60%, because 300,000, 60% of your revenue line. So it kind of raised the specter that 60% of the projects were not going to be completed, while at the same time, there's no variance on the Building Department for those same projects. And I guess we'll talk to Mr. Conley in a moment about his thoughts on it. But what percentage of your budget is doing inspections? You mentioned that you don't charge any for residential inspections, other than three-family homes, is that, or larger?
Ask the question again?
Okay. For the first page that you gave us, that was in our packet, in regards to the inspections that are required, you said during Mr. Dewitt's questioning, that you don't charge residential homeowners, correct?
Correct. We don't, well, we don't do residential inspections. We do residential buildings, three families or larger condominiums, and other larger institutions that we do annual inspections on.
Okay. The three-family plus units that you have to inspect every year, do you charge on those?
We do not.
Okay. So can you list, once again, I know it was a $100 fee, you said, the businesses, the commercial operations that get charged for their inspections?
Yep. I will run through that list very quickly. So annual inspections, separate from plan review, which the $5 per 1,000, and up to $5,000, $250 per 1,000 over that. The annual inspections, automotive repair shops, $100. Elevator inspection, $100. Antenna towers, $100. Underground water installation, $100. Liquor license, $100. Temporary liquor permit, 25. Theaters, $150, plus $50 for each additional screen. Temporary camps or schools, $50 per certificate. Daycare and nursery schools, $100. Group home residents, $100. And healthcare facilities, urgent care, skilled nursing, and assisted living, $300. And those all have to be done annually.
Okay. And on that annual, those inspection fees, approximately how much of your $500,000 budget make up those $100, or whatever the amounts of fees you just mentioned?
Minimal amount, less than $15,000.
For all of them?
For all of them.
Okay. And that's been collected?
Yeah, liquor license is, 100 liquor licenses at $100 a piece. So, you know, that makes up the bulk of it. The rest of it is minimal.
Okay. And that money's already been collected, pretty much? Does that go out July 1st?
Those are done as their permits expire or come due, so they're really spread out over the course of the year.
Okay. So you really have no idea right now where this number's going to come in, and you're saying that you want to wait until another quarter to a quarter and a half to come back to it?
So, as you know, there are so many influences on these projects, and when they were, the timing of them. Neighborhood opposition for a large residential unit can throw it off a year or two. And certainly, there are a number of those around town that you've heard on that will get that neighborhood opposition. Market forces, and lending, and money availability, that's, those aren't the issues that will affect. The universities, and the reason why we anticipated the universities were going to trend back is because of the amount of spending they had to do for COVID. And in order to adjust to all of the demands of COVID for testing, and housing, and housing adjustments, you know, the initial feedback that we got from the universities was, you know, their projects were going to be put on hold. So there are a number of factors that would affect these projects. But like I said earlier, I think these are all extremely strong projects. It's not like we're relying on a mall developer to come in and build a retail center that we would all question whether that will ever see the light of day because of economic forces. Residential, and I think Mr. Conley will, and actually said it today, you know, the residential, you know, congregate residential housing are doing extraordinarily well throughout the country, certainly in Fairfield County. We expect those projects that are residential to go forward. We expect the universities ultimately to break ground. I'm just at a loss to predict whether it will be before July 1st or after July 1st.
Okay. Then I guess we're going to have to ask the same questions to Mr. Conley, because there was no variance for the Building Department. So you raise some good points, but we may have to take a similar 60% reduction in regards to the Building Department when we talk to him. In regards to your, you list a total of units of required residential inspections, and also annual inspections, at total buildings of 585, total units 4,992. How many of those did you get to last year?
So about 180.
180 buildings?
Buildings, yep.
How many units?
I, majority of the, well, we know that all the schools were done, all the dormitories were done, and all of the liquor licenses were done, all of the permitted facilities. So what we weren't getting to is the standalone multifamily, and that's where our biggest deficit is, is multifamily, three, four, five-family, and mostly three families where they exist. And that is, you know, the challenge that we have.
All right. So out of the total buildings of 585, you said we did 180, so we did not do slightly over 400 unit buildings. And could you get back to us with the number on what the total number of units that were not inspected?
Yep.
Okay. And then you mentioned, you were talking about the position you had in your budget that was before us, and you took us through that during Mr. Dewitt's questioning, and you'd mentioned that, you know, you wanted in your budget, but you were going to talk to the first select woman about whether you should actually expend those funds, or hire the person. Did I misunderstand that?
Nope. So the, when the budget was being developed, we certainly did not have, when the budget was approved, let's go all the way to April. We didn't anticipate, I didn't anticipate, and I'm not sure that many did, that we would be in the economic hurt that we find ourselves right now. You know, there was certainly hope that, you know, we would be able to contain it. Our efforts were to preserve education and preserve the economy. All of the cuts, restrictions messaging was intended with those two goals in mind. Our emergency management team worked in partnership with the Health Department for a select woman's office to support those two primary goals, with great expectation that if we met the challenge, that we could flatten the curve. And you remember all of that early messaging about flatten the curve, to extinguish the pandemic as early as possible. So when you were, when Harry Ackley was calling Mr. Dewitt advocating for the position, it was with the understanding that, you know, we would have, our economy would recover. And I didn't have an expectation that we would be in November or December of 2020 in the depth of the economic impact that we find ourselves. But the question was raised, I think it was by you at the last meeting, what if we filled that position? What if we approved that in the budget? And I had thought about that since that year last meeting. And I know how I approach my budget responsibility, and I think that I explained it in answering Mr. Dewitt's question. Now, if the economy tanked in May and June, I would not have gone to the first select woman, or to the HR, and seek authorization to exercise the budget that was given me for an additional position, because it would be irresponsible. And I have to run the department that way. I have to make credible decisions. And to fill a position when the bottom is falling out, I'm not sure it would be approved. Let me give credit to the first select woman and the HR director. If I had sought that authorization, it may very likely that it would not be approved because the bottom fell out. But I can tell you from my position, I have to make credible decisions, and I don't think it would be appropriate for me to even ask to fill that position until we had a better picture of where we're headed with the economy. And quite honestly, we've done $44,000 worth of permit inspections between July 1st and now. We have not been able to get into residential properties, because it's unhealthy and unsafe to send employees into residential properties to do inspections. So, and I had thought about those conditions, you know, in light of your question last week. We wouldn't have, we didn't- You know, we wouldn't have, we, we didn't, the past five months has not demanded the same level of service that it would have if we didn't have COVID. So I hope that, um, that clarifies my position about the, the, the position itself, um, and how we're to approach it.
No, I appreciate that, chief, and I appreciate, um, you, you, your comments, but, you know, and, and on the other hand, I guess you must appreciate ours because we were in the middle of pandemic too, something that we had to manage the town for on a financial basis, um, knowing what was happening and trying to, you know, a lot of our taxpayers not working, losing jobs, going on unemployment, and not knowing where this pandemic would lead us to. And while we might not have had the foresight to think we'd still be in it to this day, um, I, I guess it was, it was, it was good we didn't do it because you couldn't have done all these inspections and things and, as you said, you had forty-four thousand dollars worth of income. So it turned out, I think, for all of us to be a, a good decision, um, by happenstance or, or, or not. Um, but anyway, that's it. I appreciate it, chief. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any further questions for Chief McCarthy at this point? Okay.
Mr. Brown, will the chief be available to stay on while Mr. Conley makes his comments?
Yeah, I was gonna ask you just about that.
I'm not trying to keep you late, chief, but I appreciate you staying on. Thanks. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, chief. Uh, welcome, Mr. Conley.
Hello, everyone. Uh, hopefully you can hear me.
We can hear you just fine, thank you.
Great, and, um, thank you. Um, uh, can everybody see me?
Can I see you? We see your name.
I'm in, I'm in my basement in my PJs, so thank you very much. So, I, I just wanna start by thanking everyone for your service and dedication to our community. Uh, I wanna thank the chief McCarthy for, um, the shout-out. Uh, we do our inspections with his staff. Um, um, he, his staff and I work, as he had said, hand in glove. I couldn't do my inspections without, um, without his fire marshal staff. Um, they're wonderful to work with and, um, provide a tremendous service to the community. Um, um, I think, I think that, um, you probably wanna hear the state or, or an update of, um, our, our permits and pending jobs and my view of where we are today. Um, I'm not really sure, um, how deep you want me to go into a, um, a, um, a response until you ask me questions. But I, I can start out that way and tell you my feelings, um, tell you where I am in my permitting and why I feel that we're going to be, um, um, just fine in our, I, hopefully anyway, in our budget, in, in my budget and the fire marshal's budget as well. So, um, if you want, I'll take questions or I'll just continue on and, um, I'll give you my view on, on.
Yeah, if you could just give us an overview of, you know, where you think we are and where we think you're headed. We, we do have a, a somewhat of a spreadsheet in front of us with the building permit revenues outlined, you know, budgeted actual and percent received. Um, if you want to make any comments on that document or whatever you think is pertinent, and then we'll ask, uh, some questions. You don't have to get too deep in the weeds, but if you could just give us a first quarter overview and where you think we're heading towards second, third, and, and fourth quarter, that would be appreciated.
Sure. So I just want everyone, uh, the update from, from my construction, uh, permit report. Um, I have collected eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars to date. Um, uh, most of this, um, uh, collection is from residential properties. So I just wanna, um, touch on that and then we'll go to the commercial. Um, we have done seventy pools. I want everyone to understand this is in five months. Uh, we've done seventy pools. Um, a strong indicator for me anyway is the amount of demolition, single-family demolition that we've done. I've done eleven houses in five months. So I, I believe that, um, um, those will translate. Some have already translated into permit fees, but, um, I probably have five or six more on the desk pending permits. Um, we do have a waiting period for demolition. So I think that those are, um, it's a strong indicator for me on the residential side. We're doing, uh, three, four, and five, uh, solar inspections, residential solar inspections, as well as some commercial solar as well. So, uh, we're, we're very strong in those, um, in those fields. Um, I'm not sure if anybody, um, uh, realizes that the fire marshal does not, um, actually go on residential properties, um, unless invited. So we have invited them under particular, uh, circumstance to, um, um, visit with us, uh, in particular with some, uh, gas installations, uh, with some residential, uh, fire sprinkler systems. So we do invite them, uh, for their knowledge and, um, it's a, it's a, it has a big impact on our, uh, helping us get through our, uh, inspections. Um, so, so residential-wise, uh, maybe I take a question on the residential, and then I'd love to kind of brief through, uh, the commercial aspect of what we, we have, and what I forecast here.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Conley. Any questions on residential? Mr. DeWitt?
Sorry, just to clarify, I, I see, I'm only looking at one, one, uh, spreadsheet is the title, building permit revenues that total three point two one three million. What, I don't, is that commercial or, or residential?
So that's a combination. I don't really break them out between residential and, um, commercial. So, uh, that's, that's a total package, that's a projection, that's, uh, my budget revenue projection. Um, so that, those are not, um, um, so the actual number, um, as of today, would have been the eight fifty-nine that I've collected.
Okay, got it. Yeah, I was just trying to track back to number, but, okay, that's good. Thank you.
Sure, sure. Absolutely.
Mr. Walsh?
Uh, Mr. Conley, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Yes.
All right. I'm still trying to get past the vision of you being in your pajamas in your basement, but, um, so I'll.
Don't think about it, Jim. It's just not worth it.
I'm trying not, Tom, I'm trying not to. Uh, but anyway, uh, in regards to the residential, or based on what you're saying and some of those figures you gave us regarding the seventy pools and the eleven house demolitions and what you've been seeing and, uh, to date, do you consider yourself ahead in residential permits fees of all types? Electrical plumbing, regular building permits, mechanicals?
Yeah, without a full spreadsheet and a breakout, I think that I am actually, um, way ahead. Um, um, in the past, we've discussed my commercial fees are, are, um, uh, you know, the, the numbers are much bigger. Uh, we haven't done, uh, very many commercials yet. So, um, that's kind of why I wanted to touch on the residential. Residential is very strong. People are not vacationing, they realize that they're staying at home, we're doing, um, residential, um, inspections, I mean, tons and tons of permits. Um, so, uh, I think it's strong, I think it's gonna remain strong. Um, and I believe that looking at the stock market, people working at home, they're doing home offices, they're doing home playscapes, we're doing, um, the pools alone are just ridiculous. I am still today, in December, taking pool permits. So these are, um, uh, uh, just, it's unbelievable. I don't think I've ever done that before, but we're still taking permits. Um, so those are, those, to me, plus the demolition, the fact that we have demolition, um, I believe I have four or five still sitting on my desk waiting for the, uh, the timeout period, uh, for them to take those permits, plus the eleven in the past. I'm looking at a very strong residential permit, um, for this year. Again, I wanna remind everybody, we're five months into a twelve-month, um, revenue, so, um, I, I think I'm gonna be very strong.
Do you think that a lot of the, are you seeing a lot of permits coming in from a lot of the residential, um, purchases and sales for, and New York residents moving in from the city and things like that where they wanna rehab the places that they're purchasing? Are you getting any sense of that from the counter or your, or your people from the, from the counter, from the permits being pulled?
Yeah, I don't really canvass people from, you know, where they're coming from. I hear that a lot. Um, I, I wouldn't, uh, a, a lot of it comes through contractors. So, uh, we're getting a contractor making the application, so I'm not typically looking at the homeowner and his home address. Uh, we do have a fair amount of, um, house flippers who may or may not be, you know, part of that whole scheme, but a lot of, a lot of people are flipping houses, so we get a lot of that.
Thank you, Tom.
But to be honest, I, I could not tell you if, um, if the influx is really coming from New York. I hear that statement a lot. I, I'm, I just, for some reason, it's not on my, uh, it's not in my path. I, I don't view it like that. I, I, I look at contractors and I, and I look at, um, um, you know, what's in front of me and, and how to, how to get that off the desk. So, I don't look at that.
Understood. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Uh, Ms. Marmian?
Hi, thank you, Sheila Marmian. Now, hi, Mr. Conley.
Um. How are you?
I'm well, thank you. Uh, my question is, um, residential is very strong in this first quarter. How does this compare? And I know you're gonna get into the commercial in a minute, and I'm gonna probably ask the same question. But looking back a year, first quarter, how does residential compare in terms of the makeup of revenue this year to last?
Yeah, so I tried to do a quick comparison of last year's revenue. Last year, at this time, I was probably close to two million dollars in revenue. But a lot of that revenue came through, uh, several large, um, large residential properties. I had a residential property, uh, who, who, the permit fees were based on thirty-nine million dollars. Um, uh, very, very odd for someone to walk in and say, I'm spending thirty-nine million dollars on one project. Um, others were very, very high numbers. These were estates. So it's, it's that anomaly that's really hard to track. Uh, why somebody would spend that, I don't know. Um, so last year, again, at this time, we're at two million dollars. Last year was a very, very big, uh, number for us. I'm sure you can see that, uh, from, from our revenue last year. So I, I, it, it's really, uh, it's an anomaly for me to say, um, last year could even be compared to any other year. Um, but I still think that, uh, we're, we're probably, other than the, the several large projects, as I described, in the multimillion dollar, um, we're doing very well and, and very strong. Um, I believe that I have two or three on my desk right now of, uh, residential renovation in the probably million and a quarter range. So people are, um, taking these houses, these older homes, and renovating it to large numbers. So they're Southport addresses, but there's certainly, um, there certainly is interest in the older homes and, and rebuilding them at, at big fees. So hopefully that continues.
We need another thirty-five million dollar property, um, for this year.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, well, well, we're hoping, we're hoping that that's gonna happen. I mean, when people see more and more of these properties going for those kind of numbers and looking at, um, the amount of renovation, um, and I, and that happened to be on Sasko Hill. I believe that that has kind of pushed that, um, um, that stagnant market up a little bit up there, truthfully. So hopefully it does.
We're, we're ahead with, uh, the revenue with, with smaller residential, but multiple residential, uh, projects and the need for permits in this quarter. And then you're gonna describe to us what's going on in the, with the commercial properties? And then would you just integrate into that when you're discussing that, a comparison to last year for us? When you get there?
Sure. So, um, if there are no other questions on the residential, um.
Now, there's a few, there's a few, Mr. Conley. Yep, I'm gonna go to Mr. Testani and, and then Ms. Charlton. Mr. Testani?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, uh, Tom, how are you? Just, uh, just a.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment, there is a very handsome picture of you on, on website, just for those that don't want, I'm not doing your, in your pajamas. And, uh.
Well, thank you. My wife, my wife dressed me, just so you know, blue on blue is not my thing, but she dressed me for that, so just so you know.
Just so you're aware, I've had some interactions with the building department myself at what is a new house for me over the last couple of months. And I just wanna shout out to you and the department and say I've had a, a really great experience. So thank you to you and everyone in the department.
Um. Yeah, I will, I will mention that to my staff, by the way. Um, I did not mention my staff before, and thanks. Um, it's a very difficult time for me and our staff and the, the volume that we're seeing and, um, everyone, every single inspector has, and I'm gonna say fifteen to thirty permits on their desk, ready for review, ready to collect fees for. It's, it's, uh, it's beyond belief. Uh, I, I'm, I'm choking on so many permits. So I'm glad you had a wonderful experience.
I did, yes, and thank you again for that. And I just have a quick question with regard to the revenue on the residential to sort of dovetail off what Ms. Marmian was saying. With regard to last year's anomaly, if you go back perhaps a previous year, are we more in line, would you say, with what the town typically would, uh, have for residential revenue in terms of, of permits? Or I just wondered what the trend is. Again, we've alluded to it a couple of times with the real estate boom, for lack of a better word, of what the town's gone through the last, let's say, six months. So perhaps the numbers will be a slightly higher, I would think, this year because of the influx. But you, is there a way to sort of maybe go back a previous year because of that anomaly we had a year ago?
Yeah, so the year before also had, um, some very large, um, I don't know if everyone's aware, I don't wanna mention an address, but a very large, um, residential property with multiple, uh, buildings on it that also created a, uh, very, a very large, uh, revenue stream. Um, uh, they, they were building, um, horse barns and, and horse training facilities in the, um, you know, multimillion dollar range. So we, again, had, um, a large property, um, over multiple years, spending a lot of money. So, so it's, it's so hard to figure a trend on any of this. Um, I wish we had, you know, um, three or four a year, but, um, I'm not sure that I could trend that. Um, each, each of those, by the way, each of those larger projects were so, a, a surprise to me with the numbers they presented. Um, personally, I would have lied and said it was twenty-eight million, not thirty-nine million dollars, but that's me. Um, so, so I'm not, I think both years are, are, um, atypical, um, and it's, it's, I would always prefer to maybe, uh, to average these in to give us a better feeling of where we are. Uh, but, but all these years in the past, I'm gonna say six years that I've been doing this, have been very, very strong. We're doing, um, a lot of demolition, knockdown. The beach area is still very strong. People are very interested in the beach area. So there's, there are contractors who are out there still buying up properties. Um, it's, it's really, really hard to find a trend here. Uh, but I, I would say the beach is the trend. People are pushing out, the beach has gotten, um, the beach area has gotten, um, bigger and stronger. Um, Southport people have a big interest in it now. Um, I, I don't, I don't know if these are trends or not. I'm, I'm not really concentrated on that, what, what a trend is anymore. I, I, I thought it would all die after Sandy, and, um, here we are, just, um, going ahead and booming, booming. So, um, I wish I had an answer for you, I really don't.
No, that's fair. I appreciate the, the information. Thank you.
Sure.
Hey, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Testani. Ms. Charlton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hi, Tom.
Hi.
Did you say that to date you were at eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand of revenue? Did I, did I get that right?
Yeah, that's today, that's, uh, December one, um, I ran the numbers. So, um, again, that is off of my construction permit, um, report, which may, um, which may actually lead our immunist report a little bit. Um, because as the money is being, uh, as I'm issuing permits, um, the date of issue is when we're taking and, um, uh, accommodating for that fee structure. So, um, it may, it may take a day or two to actually find its way into immunist, uh, from, from, you know, um, uh, my, my office to the financial office. So it takes a day or two, or a week or three.
That, that's fine. I guess my question is, and maybe you'll address this when you talk about the commercial piece, but at five months for eight hundred and fifty- but at five months for 859,000, I mean, that's not a run rate anywhere near the budget number. That's a run rate that gets, gets us to roughly 2 million for the year, if I do my math right. So, um, and I, I understand that there's likely some seasonality in here and you talked about residential versus commercial, but it, it seems like a lot of ground to make up to get to a budget number of 3.2 million if we're only at 859,000 for five months. So can you maybe, and, and again, maybe that, you know, just we'll dovetail into your comments about commercial, but, you know, we'd, we'd need to have, you know, you know, over a million dollars, um, in excess of, of where we're running to date. And maybe you can just address that, um, in your, in your comments about commercial. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. And, and I'll, and I'll, and I'll start out by saying, uh, most of this, if not all of this, um, although we have had a few small commercial jobs, most of this money is residential. Um, we have not taken in the commercial permits that, um, um, again, I, I'm not sure seasonality would be the word for it, but, um, it's just timing. Um, um, so the, the, uh, this is, this is 99% um, uh, residential. And I think that's reflected in the fire marshal or the, or the, uh, fire department's, uh, view on this as well. So we haven't taken, although we've taken a few small ones, um, we have not taken in the big, um, commercial sites yet. So, um, but I will address that when we, um, when we're done with the residential.
That'd be helpful because I, I just, you know, the numbers are, uh, and maybe seasonality is not the right word, but it's, it's a lot to count on, I guess, um, unless those things are actually in the pipeline that, that we're going to get that much. And, and given what has happened, uh, with the universities and some of the issues that they're having, the money that they're having to spend on COVID, um, you know, the possibility of, you know, going online again, um, it, it's just a, a, you know, a worrisome trend. So it would be good to hear your perspective and your confidence level on, you know, on how we make up that ground, if you will. So, um, look forward to your comments.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Are we ready to move on to commercial? Uh, Mr. Walsh? You're, Mr. Walsh, you're on mute.
Um, Ms. Charlton, I, I just did a calculation as well. We're about $480,000 behind as we sit here today if we planned on the full $3.2 million coming in equally over 12 months. Did you say we were a million dollars off? Or is that a million dollars on a yearly basis?
So I just took eight, if you take 859,000 divided, I think that's five months of revenue. That's, you know, just, I know this isn't the right way to do it, but it averages out to 171 or 2,000 a month. So at 12 months, that would be 2 million and change is what I got. Um, so that's why I, I was comparing that to the 3.2 million. And again, I know that's a primitive calculation and doesn't take into account, you know, what may be in the pipeline on commercial, but, but that's how I was looking at it.
The way I was looking at it was take the 3.2 million dollars, we're five months out of 12 months in right now. If you take five 12ths of that, it equals, um, 1,338 is where we should be if it was all spread equally over the year on revenue. And we have 859 in the door, leaving us about $480,000 variance where we are right now. But I'm hoping Mr. Mr. Connelly is going to tell us how we're going to make that up.
Yeah, and I, I, you're right. I, I was doing it for the whole year. So projecting your 400,000 shortfall for the, you know, if that were to continue for the year, that's where I came up with the million two. So.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
If I might con. Yeah, I, I interrupt it. It, it, could I, could I just interrupt that real quick? Um, I, I hate the term seasonality because there's really no seasonality. Um, I guess you could equate pools to seasonality, but that doesn't work. So that's why I wanted to break this down to, um, um, uh, residential first, um, and, and the commercial after. Um, and remind everybody that we have not seen the res, the commercial activity. This is 90, 99% um, residential properties that are, that are pushing now. So, um, you know, there's, um, there's, seasonality is just a bad term and, uh, I just haven't seen the commercial yet. So, um, it's, it doesn't, it doesn't quite equate the way everybody thinks it does. Um, there's just no, I mean, I'd, I'd love to say it did, but, uh, I don't collect, I don't collect, um, you know, 2.2 every single month or, or, um, or whatever it equates to on a, on a 12-month basis. So it, it comes in as it comes in, um, but I still think that, um, um, and I will explain my methodology and, and how I get to it, um, about the commercial. Um, as long as everybody's happy with the residential. So I think we're strong in residential, by the way, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Connelly. I think we are complete with residential. Let's please move on to commercial.
Thank you. So, um, I just, um, a cou- a couple of things that are happening today. Um, uh, the, uh, Country Club of, of, um, Fairfield has a small, smaller commercial project. They're doing a, um, uh, again, it's probably in the million two range. Uh, that is, uh, that has not hit the, um, that's, it hasn't hit the permit stage yet. Um, I, I believe I'm waiting for one more, um, um, department to sign off on that. So it's a smaller project, but I, I figure that's already in the works right now. Um, we have, um, several projects that are, um, I, um, you know, maybe I'll go to the bigger ones. Fairfield University Convocation Center. I spoke to their principals today. They're absolutely, um, um, pushing that for March of '21. So I believe we're going to break ground. I'm sure we're going to break ground, um, in that, uh, larger project there. They've assured me that they have, um, um, that's a go for them. So that's one of our big drivers that, obviously the two universities are a big driver. Um, that's a big project. Today, they're digging for, um, Townhouse C on, um, on Roundhill Road. I know last year we did two, um, of the townhouses and they're, they're, they're digging it today. Um, they have a, uh, a foundation only permit, uh, because they haven't come up with, um, enough of the mechanicals for me to give them a full permit on that. So that is going today. Uh, that will bring in more revenue, uh, once we get the, the actual build out from them. So the townhouse, Country Club of, of Fairfield is in the, in the works right now. They're actually digging both of them. Sacred Heart University Hockey Arena is a go if they get, if they get the zoning approval Tuesday night. They believe they're going to. I spoke to their construction manager today. Um, they would like to break ground in January. So, um, I hear a lot of, um, misgivings about it from people that it's not going to happen, but Fairfield, um, Sacred Heart is absolutely, um, hell-bent on it. They're ready to go. They have the money. They have the shovels ready to dig. So, um, you know, everybody cross your fingers on that one. But, um, those are, those are two big projects, the Fairfield U conv- uh, convocation and that hockey arena. So both of them are a go. As of today, I spoke to their construction people. So I, I just want to reassure everybody of that. Um, and those are big drivers, by the way. Those are going to be some fairly large projects. We also have 78 Uncle A Place, which is, um, a smaller multi-family, uh, multi-story, um, building that is absolutely in the queue. They ask me every day, where's my permit? Um, I'm just having a bit of trouble getting it off the table. Um, they're absolutely ready to dig. Um, today they're ready to dig. Tomorrow they're ready to dig. So as soon as I can get, um, um, a, a code review off my desk, that is another large project. Um, so I, you know, just, again, I want to make sure everybody knows that, um, these are, these are, these are three or four projects that are ready to go and, and, um, um, and I have the greatest confidence that they're going to happen. Uh, the Old Coles, I have a $3 million project sitting on my table. Um, again, it's, um, very difficult for me to get code review out. Um, so that'll translate into 30, 40, 50,000 dollars worth of permit fees. Um, and again, that will, all of these projects, by the way, will translate into the fire marshal's, um, revenue. Um, that is on the table and ready to go. Um, we have, um, several of these, um, they're not huge, but they're housing complex, um, that I'm sure everybody's seen, but they're, they're, um, multimillion dollar projects. Uh, we have, um, Beach Road, uh, is one of the bigger ones. That is, um, I believe they have passed, uh, uh, their zoning. Um, and they're probably just putting, um, just dealing with some of the neighborhood issues that are, um, there. We also have, um, uh, the former Joe's American Bar and Grill. Um, that's kind of an unknown to me right now. Nobody's been into my office yet to discuss it. But, um, as I hear, it's been sold and, uh, they are ready to move on something there. Um, I, I would have to dig a little deeper into that. I haven't had the time yet to find out who the principals are. But, um, uh, I, I understand that they want to do something, uh, pretty quick there.
Excuse me, Mr. Brown. Can I just interject a minute? When is this, uh, second quarterly review meeting of the Board of Finance? The second quarter review? Can you hear me? Mr. Brown?
Yes, I can hear you.
I'm sorry.
No, I can hear you. My, I was, um, I was losing a connection there for a minute. So yes, go ahead, Ms. Cupjack.
When is the second quarter review meeting scheduled?
May 18th.
No, it can't be that late.
I thought it was.
It's the one before that.
Earlier.
February?
February?
February, sorry. Sorry, yeah, February.
February.
Because I think we would have a lot more information. I know that, um, obviously this is my first, but I think we would have a lot more information, more details in the second, uh, quarter. My understanding is the first quarter is very difficult to really speculate and all we're doing is basically talking about speculation. We'd have more data and actual information at the second quarter.
I agree we would have more information. Uh, Mr. Connelly, let me just jump in, please. I agree we'd have more information, um, but what spurred this on was the variance with the, with the fire marshal fees and when it compared to the, um, you know, how we're doing with permits and, and with their building, uh, permit revenue. And I think though, what I'm hearing from Mr. Connelly is you're, you're confident that you're going to hit your revenue budget.
I am, and I'm confident that the fire marshal's office will as well. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm looking at 13 to 15, um, medium to large-sized jobs here. Uh, there's, um, there's stuff in the queue. There's stuff on my desk. Um, I don't have actual numbers on, you know, what Fairfield U or Sacred Heart are going to spend, but I have a real good idea. So I, I'm, I'm confident that the, that the work just hasn't hit the, um, the table yet. I'm, I'm confident in all of these. We talked about the New York, um, uh, influence here. Um, uh, um, we're wrapping up a project on, um, uh, Kings Highway and Commerce there, and they're filling those apartments up. So, um, there, there's that, that, um, developer has purchased two more pieces of property. So he is, um, right in that very vicinity. So he is confident also that when he's wrapped up with that project, again, I don't, this is not, um, you know, uh, fiscal year '21, but he's confident that he's going to be able to build more over there. Um, so, yeah, I, I really feel strong, um, um, uh, on all of these projects. Um, it's really hard to gauge what, uh, you know, what's going to come in when, but, uh, these people are, um, in my opinion, going to do it in fiscal '21. Um, I just, I just received, uh, um, a traffic report from the state today, a favorable traffic report from the housing complex on Thorpe Street. So that's a CINTO build, but, um, I'm assuming he's waiting for things like that to present to, um, uh, you know, our zoning board. So, uh, and that was a favorable report that I read from the state today. So.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Connelly.
Yeah.
That's good. That's good to know. And as, um, as alluded to, we'll see where we're at in, uh, February. Is there any further, further questions for Mr. Connelly? Okay, how about for Chief McCarthy? Okay, Mr. Connelly, Chief McCarthy, thank you for your time tonight.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, that brings us to item number six. Quarterly financial review follow-up on various board requests for additional information. Uh, we have Mr. Schmidt and Ms. Bossi here to address the four bullet points that you see, uh, the breakdown of department vacancies, God Course revenue, parking authority revenue update, and the accounting for tax collections received after June 30th. So, Mr. Schmidt, turning it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we will, I'll go on to the, uh, to the vacancies. You asked for a report, a detailed report of all the vacancies. So that's what you have there. In front of you, there's 26 of them, uh, 26 vacancies. As we know, the last time, well, both of them were in police, um, for the reasons that I spoke the last meeting. There are, just a footnote here that there are seven other positions that I also mentioned last meeting in, uh, ECC, uh, that, because that is not expected to come online this fiscal year. Um, and so those, those never, because it didn't come online and they never made it into the, uh, into our system. And so they're not reflected, uh, this, this list is mostly from Munis. So they're not reflected in this list. So this is, this is where we're at. You can see the, uh, the list of each of the positions by department. Um, and that's, that's what we have.
Okay, and Mr.?
I, I thought that I would go through that one first. You can ask me questions and then we can move on to the next one.
Right, that's what we'll do. We'll take one of these at a time and we'll start with vacancies. There was additional information we were looking for that you had mentioned, uh, with the time constraints, we were not able to provide, but we will, you will get back to us on the vacancies.
Can you tell me, I, I went back and looked at the, uh, you know, re-looked at the meeting. I didn't, uh, I didn't see anything or hear anything that, uh, asking for more detail. So just for clarification for the next meeting, could you, uh, let me know what that is you're looking for?
Sure. I can send that over to you, Ms. Ms. Charlton?
Uh, yeah, I think the one piece of additional information we were trying to understand is in the forecast, these vacancies produced, I think roughly a million dollar positive variance. And what was the assumption being used for when these would be filled? I think that was another question we had on this. You know, were they going to be filled in January and December? Or did you assume they'd be vacant all year? How did we come up with the, the million dollars, um, that, that we had in the, uh, the forecast?
So we, we based that number on actuals. And what we were seeing in the actuals at the time was about one point, uh, let me go back to my notes. Uh, 1.4 million in vacancies. And that, that's based on actual numbers and we're projecting that that's going to roll out and continue to be savings. As far as when, uh, you know, we don't know exactly and it's going to be position by position, uh, when those get refilled, if they get refilled.
But if that's the actual amount, that would imply that all of these positions would be filled immediately then, right? You've, you've still, if, or am I misunderstanding you?
I, I think, you know, we were being conservative and taking the actual number and rolling that forward. And so you're, you're correct, there could be additional savings. Um, but with, this was the, in order to, uh, again, to be conservative about it and not overestimate and miss our mark, we were conservative about. and miss our mark, we were conservative about what the number was.
No, I, I hear you. I just, just to clarify, though, we had an actual number of a million dollars of savings just in the first quarter because of these vacancies?
No, that's, that's projected for the year, Laurie, I'm sorry, it's Caitlin. Ten of these positions are related to the ECC combined center. So our assumption with that was a, that those were going to remain vacant for the remainder of the fiscal year. So that's a large chunk of our, of our savings.
But, but that gets back to my question, then. If this is, if the million is a forecast for the year, when does that assume these positions will be filled? I mean, if we've already saved a million, then that, that means, you know, unless you hire every, every one of these positions tomorrow, there would be additional vacancy savings, right? So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what assumption you used in that forecast. Did you assume that they'd be vacant for half the year, the whole year, three quarters, I mean?
So every, every position like there's, there was eight police officers. We, we got a schedule from Chief Smith, talking about churn and who left and when the assumed hire date would be going forward at the lower step. So some of this is, is considered churn, if lack for a better word. And due to the academy being closed, it was taking a little bit longer to fill some of these positions. So some, some of these savings is just the higher salaried people leaving and then the new hire coming in at a lower step.
So your forecast was bottoms up, then, based on each individual position?
Yeah, so what, what I do for the quarterly is I reach out to every department head and say, how many, how many vacancies do you have? And when do you expect to fill those vacancies?
Okay, Ms. Charlton?
The answer is, it depends on the position, right? So we don't really know. Some of these will be vacant for longer periods than others, but the assumption that was built in was based on the individual position as estimated by each department head, I think, is what I heard, so.
Correct. And I think the only ones we know of that for the, for the full fiscal year are, is the ECC piece. And I believe the nurse at Stratfield School, due to the environment going on with COVID, is kind of on standby, not knowing if they were going to need that nurse as well. But from what I can remember from all the departments, I believe the others are being filled, so it's a, it's a timing issue. But those seven, ten ECC, seven being from Westport, three being from us, and then the nurse, I, I believe are the ones that I know of that are pretty much on hold.
Okay, thank you. Still can't hear you. Or at least I can't. No. So Mr. Matola, Mr. Matola, if you don't mind, I'll come right back to you while you figure that out.
I'm on now.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I apologize about that. So if, if we filled every single position that's on the list today, what you seem to be saying, if I'm understanding it correctly, is that we're still going to have about a million dollars or so in savings because we're not going to fill any of those ECC positions this year? Am I right or wrong about that?
The ECC positions are, are a total of, the ECC positions are in addition to the one point four million that we estimated. And those amounted to about, if I remember correctly, seven to eight hundred thousand dollars.
Right. So what, I have the schedule in front of me. What we had for vacancies was one point four million, and for ECC, eight hundred and five thousand. So what you're saying, then, Jared, is that the one point four million is a savings in addition to the, in, in addition to the eight hundred and five thousand, which is being offset actually by the ECC subsidies of a revenue loss of one point one million, right? So those two tie together.
Yes. Yes, and the, you know, the ECC is easier to know because we know we've, we're predicting that it's not going to open for the year. So we know that we can annualize those salary amounts, and we know how many people there are. So that's a, you know, fairly easy number for us to predict.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. DeWitt, you had a question? You're good? Okay, any other questions on the vacant, vacant positions? Mr. Walsh?
So we plan on hiring all the DPW employees that are listed on the vacancy report before the end of the year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. The administrative assistant, the selectmen's office, is that the, one of the part-time people works in, like, right when you enter the first select woman's office?
No.
What position is that?
That was a position that was not funded in this budget. So it's considered a vacancy because the position is there, but it's not funded. So there's three of those positions on, on this list. If you'll remember, the administrative assistant, the assistant animal control, and the account clerk. So they're considered positions in terms of vacancy, but they're unfunded positions in the fiscal twenty-one budget.
So wait a minute, I'm, I'm confused because I thought we had agreed what we were doing with all this stuff, so I'm a little confused. So the administrative assistant, the selectmen's office, what, whose position was that? Who was in that position?
Kathleen Griffin.
Okay. But she's not in this year's budget, right?
Correct.
So why is she listed as a vacancy?
Well, it's a position, but it's an unfunded position. So depending on your definition of a vacancy, is there, is there a position in Munis as a position control? Same with the assistant animal control, but they're unfunded.
How do we get rid of that?
The position is authorized, but there's not funding for it.
How do we get rid of the position?
It was transferred in fiscal twenty, it was, we did a budget transfer. You guys did a budget transfer, I believe, in December of last year?
Yeah.
To fund the CAO and chief of staff positions.
Yes, so those are new positions. How do we get rid of this old position of administrative assistance and selectmen?
Yeah, I think that, those will be conversations for, I, I think we're going to talk about that during this bud, the upcoming budget.
All right. Does this body have the ability to get rid of that position?
But I don't know whether it needs to go back to the union or if there's any implications. Not the top one, but the other two, I, I don't know that.
Okay. Could you give us a list of all the positions in the entire town hall that are just kind of positions like this?
Well, I think these three, this is it. That's the extent of it.
Everything else is funded.
Okay. Because I thought we had this change-
And we're, I'm sorry, but, go ahead.
I thought we had had this change that had happened, that had been approved, and then we had a new budget year where we funded these new positions, and it's just confusing to see it because, are you saying that the administrative selectment to the selectment had a zero budget impact?
It was a zero dollar in the fiscal twenty-one budget.
Okay, which of the other positions-
Everything that happened with that, everything that happened with that position was a fiscal twenty event.
Yeah, that's why I'm confused why it's even on the list.
It was just what's called a position, as a position control in Munis. That one not so much as the other two are union positions.
Okay, so the administrative assistant and selectmen is not a union position?
Yeah. Correct.
Okay, so that one can be just taken out, right? I mean, get, get rid of. We reshuffled how we, we funded the first select woman's office.
You're probably right. That's probably just a cleanup of our system.
Okay, and then the other two positions that are union positions are the assistant animal control officer? Correct?
Yes.
Okay, and that has no variance impact because it's got zero dollars in that budget, right?
Correct.
And then the other position is what?
Nurse coordinator.
No, the account clerk, the account clerk at the library.
Okay. It's a union position, but has no funding in this year's budget, so has nothing to do with the variance.
Correct.
Okay. Well, it seems to me we got to straighten those two positions out, but I guess we can talk about that at a later point. The police officers, have any of those, there seems to be nine police officers that are listed as vacancies. Have any of those positions been filled or they're just vacant as of today, but saw a couple of people are in the, in the, in the, are in the police academy, correct?
So the academy is running another class starting January, and we have four, four slots slated for Fairfield.
So four out of these nine?
Yes.
Okay. And then you're still expecting the other five to be filled?
At some point, we are, we are expecting that there could be some lateral transfers as well coming from other towns.
Okay, and currently, right now, in order to, to protect the town, it's all overtime right now for those nine police officers that's covering those, those, their slots?
I guess I would assume if there, yeah, assuming everything else, everything else being equal, then I would say so.
Okay. Was, in the variance report, was there a variance, a negative variance for this police overtime?
I do not think they gave me what, that they're going to expect to be over budget by the end of the fiscal year. Are you asking me if there was an actual variance for September? Because what we always do is do a projection, and I was told that by, by the end of the year, there would not be a variance on police overtime.
Was there overtime over for this, this past term? This past, for the first quarter?
Well, a lot of it's seasonal, so you can't really take the budget. I did not compare it to last year, but a lot of vacations are normally taken in the summer months. So it's, it's not an easy, you know, take the budget and divide it by twelve.
Okay.
I mean, I could, I could look at last year's just to give you a feel, but I don't know how COVID had an impact to that, too. So, because a lot of it, you know, you know what I mean, would be coverage due to people going on vacation. So if that didn't happen, then the numbers wouldn't be apple to apple.
Okay. Ms. Bossy, can you make a note for, there'd be a presentation on that overtime, if there is a variance, and for them to estimate it, what they're imagining it for the end of the year, based on when they think these police officers are coming back online for the second quarter?
I'd imagine that would be part of the Q two. Do you need it before that?
No, I don't need it before that. I'm just saying, by Q two, I mean, it only sounds, I mean, unless we hire a lot of lateral people soon, like a lot, like five guys, we, we either got to hire five guys soon or there's going to be a large variance in overtime to cover the town by, by mid-year. Because even the guy-
Yeah, we will look at all those reports for the next quarterly, or all those accounts.
Okay. And I'd push it, you know, I guess it's up to the, I, I would expect the police department to be able to run that report and what their thoughts are on when they're going to be hiring these people by then.
Yes.
I'm not asking you-
Yeah, I know for this Q, Q one, he gave me a listing of assumptions of hire dates for every officer.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I'm like I said, I'm not looking for you to do that report. It's really their, how they're going to manage to their budget and asking them when they plan on hiring people and these five lateral positions they plan on hiring. And that we're going to want to see, I think, after Q two, a better analysis on where we stand with that, because otherwise, there's a potential, what seems to me would be a potential large hole in, in their overtime. That's, that's all I have. Yeah?
Just, just to respond to that, I think there, it's not just about them wanting to fill these positions. There's a, you know, they're looking at the, the supply of, of police officers, too, and they're not, it's not easy to come by, you know, quality police officers. And so, you know, one way to, to do that is through the, the academy track and then to also look at, look at what's in other towns. So I, I don't think it's a question of them wanting to fill those positions or not. It's just, it's, some of it's out of their control and, and, you know, really trying to find the best officers that they can.
Yeah, I, I understand that, Mr. Schmidt. I got that exact same concern, is that where are all these quality officers, these five new officer laterals, going to be coming from when no other town can get their people into academy? I've got that same concern. So I'm imagining that you're not going to be able to get them as readily as you might believe, or, I'm not saying you personally, Mr. Schmidt, as we're all talking about getting these laterals and that we're going to have to go through the academy route a little, you know, more percentage-wise, and it's going to take longer to get these people through the academy and become officers. So I'm imagining that, based on that, there's going to be a hole in the overtime account that's going to be pretty large, actually, with that many officers.
So I just want to jump in. I know the Fairfield Police have been working diligently to recruit, and they're doing an actually pretty good job of it. And I'm confident they're going to be able to take care of this in short order. There is actually a lot of lateral police, quality lateral police who want to transfer to Fairfield because of our reputation and our, the reputation of the police department in our town. So I'm not actually concerned about it. I think they're going to be able to handle this.
Excellent. Well, I think the second quarter report on this specifically on overtime, that the police are going to prepare for us and we could hold them to, we'll see what it says.
My second quarter will probably be a much better time for these discussions.
Well, you know, Ms. Kupchak, to that point, I think it's good to get a feel for where we are at the end of the first quarter as well. And Mr. Testani?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Jared. Jack Testani, hey, Jared, how are you?
I'm doing well, Mr. Testani, how are you?
Good, good, thank you. I have a question for you and Ms. Kupchak. I'm just curious, I think you know I'm pretty familiar through some family members with regard to police work. I'm curious about the laterals, number one. Number two, have there been any resignations over the last, let's say, three to six months? Have you had a chance to discuss with Chief, Chief Liddy, the impact of the police legislative, you know, act that was passed in the state of Connecticut, which I do know affected many other towns? That's A, and B, well, I'm just curious, I'm happy for Fairfield that we're getting the laterals. I'm just wondering, what, what do we attribute that to? Thank you.
I think, to, to answer your question, Jack, I think the, the police department would be better suited to answer that question appropriately. But yes, the police accountability bill, I think, is impacting departments across the state regarding recruiting new officers to enter into the field of police work. And we are seeing retirements, not just in Fairfield, but across the state due to the impact of the legislation. But as far as who is retired and what the lateral moves, that would be a discussion better posed to the chief of police.
Well, and the reason why I bring that up, Ms. Kupchak, is to sort of dovetail off of what Mr. Walsh was sort of alluding to, because one of the things I'm familiar with with regard to other town departments is because of the- because one of the things I'm familiar with with regard to other town departments is because of the implications of the Police Accountability Act. Many, uh, current police officers have resigned completely from various police departments unexpectedly. So that may affect our vacancies, and it doesn't sound like it has up to this point. But I'm, you know, that's why I'm asking is if you've heard any of that from the chief. I, um, perhaps we can get some kind of a report along those lines for the second quarter. Or perhaps, um, Jared may have heard of something from the chief, or we can check in with him and get sort of an update as to where we are with vacancies, uh, for the second quarter as we're, we're talking about. I'm just concerned because other towns, I know, are experiencing sort of a sudden vacancy issue because of that legislative act, as, as you alluded to on Ms. Kupchak.
Yes.
That's all it is.
To just answer you, that, um, you know, I speak to the chief, obviously, uh, pretty much every day. And, um, we're not seeing retirements, a whole lot of retirements from our community. We do have a wonderful police department and a community that supports them. And so we're not seeing a whole lot of that. I think what, what our town and other towns across the state are seeing is a, a lack of recruitment, uh, into the field of law enforcement. And I think, well, that will have an impact over the years to come. Um, but, uh, again, I think that this might be a discussion to have off, uh, with the chief more adequately. I know we have been hiring, so we have the vacancies we have now, but we had more vacancies and we do have, we've, we've had some new hires. So a- actually, I think we're doing well as far as attracting. We're, people want, uh, law enforcement wants to work in the town of Fairfield.
Yeah, that's great.
It is great. We should be very proud of our department.
Yes, we should. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Matola?
I mean, since the topic was raised, I can tell you where I work, we're getting hundreds and hundreds of candidates to apply to become police officers. So I'm not sure what the evidence is that this legislation is stopping people from entering the field of policing. So I just, I just, you know, where I work, it's, it's not like that at all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Matola. Any other, any other questions on vacancies? Ms. Charlton? You're, you're still on mute, Lori?
Uh, I am?
No, you're good now.
Okay. Thank you. I guess my question is, there's a lot of vacancies here, and, and maybe, maybe this dovetails a little bit to Mr. Walsh's question about the overtime. But what are the implications of all these vacancies? Is there any impact on town services as a result of these positions being vacant? And if not, um, what does that mean in terms of needing to fill the positions? I'm not suggesting anything either way. I'm just, it's, it's, you know, sort of an obvious question. Um, you know, we've got, you know, ten police, well, nine police officers and a detective. We have several DPW workers. So how, how is this impacting town services? Are there, you know, things we're not getting to, things that are being delayed, et cetera? Um...
Um, and Lori, as far as the police department, I think that's a question better, uh, asked again for the, uh, the chief or one of the captains. Um, as far as I know, uh, this speaks to Mr. Walsh's point, you know, obviously, we're filling in some gaps with overtime and they are working on recruiting. But this is obviously a question better, uh, posed for the police, uh, chief or one of the captains. And as far as DPW goes, yes, um, I think we've done an admirable job in keeping up with everything that happened. Um, we have the same staffing levels we had during the storms, and we handled those admirably. Uh, everyone worked together, took care of everything that needed to be done. The things that delayed us were not caused by our department. They were caused by UI and their inability to bring us make safe crews and things of that nature. But other than that, we have been able to take care of everything we need. Yes, people are stressed and we've had to double, you know, uh, separate people in trucks because of COVID. So that's, uh, put a strain on, on our services. But far as I know, and believe me, I hear every day, uh, whenever there's a problem in town, I, I, I get called first. So, uh, right now, uh, people are pleased with how our DPW is performing, and actually, I think they're doing a great job. But we can do much better when we're fully staffed, obviously.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kupchak. I'd like to move on now to the next bullet point. Um, to golf course revenue projection details. Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Calabrese, thank you for calling in.
Thank you. Yes, uh, Mr. Calabrese is on. I'm just gonna run through the numbers really quick and then, uh, he can provide details. Um, so where we're at now, you see, the numbers have changed a little bit from the last report just because of the timing of the report. The projection at this time between the, uh, Smith Richardson and, and the par three are to be 631,000 and change, uh, over what the budgeted amount was. Uh, and that's based on, uh, as we talked about last meeting, the, uh, large, uh, extraordinarily large number of rounds, uh, during the first part of this fiscal year. Um, and then an assumption that there would be, that would level off and the, uh, the participation or the number of rounds would, would go back to, uh, something more like what they normally are and what we saw in 2019. And I can, uh, Anthony, if you want to, uh, give some more color to it.
Yeah, thank you, Jared. Um, Jared's assessment is, uh, pretty much spot on. What I did was I just took the actual revenue that we had as of, um, October 31st, um, and then just compiled 2019, spring of 2019, months of April, May, and June. So, uh, 2019, 2018 were very similar years as far as those months go. Uh, so I took those numbers, added to it like I typically do to try to give a projection, and that's, uh, where we end up. Obviously, um, if for some reason the golf lobbyists or COVID strikes on golf and shuts down golf courses, those numbers will change. Um, if people are still working from home, I would expect those numbers to be even better than, uh, what we're projecting. But I think, uh, projections we're giving you right now are very safe.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Calabrese. So we only asked about golf course revenue? I guess? All right, just, just sticking with this, um, any questions on the golf course revenue projection? Okay. While, while you're here, Mr. Calabrese, how are your other revenue projections?
Uh, obviously, yeah. The, the, the one big, uh, elephant in the room is our pavilion rentals. Um, right now, I think the last, I, I watched your last meeting. I apologize for not sitting in and, uh, leaving everybody out there to dry and making me have to come back here. Uh, but I could have given you answers that night, so I apologize. Um, the governor unfortunately has shut down, uh, the, the wedding industry, for, uh, lack of a better term. Um, when we made our projections for putting the budget together back in March, April, even May, um, everything was lining up where he was going into phase two as of June, uh, I can't remember the date, June 20th. And then phase three was supposed to roll out July 20th. So we anticipated being open, um, full-time down there as of July 1. But we, uh, we tried to play it safe there and we reduced our revenue projections by half for July, August, and September. And then pretty much the winter months, we said, okay, well, we'll probably do what we do in the winter. And then the spring, um, would be just, just like it always had been. Well, unfortunately, we stayed closed July, we stayed closed August, September, October. Here we are in December and we are still closed, um, with no sign of opening up. Um, and it is, uh, it's terrifying, but that was when I said to, to Caitlin and Jared, um, you know, a week or two ago, that, you know, I think we better just play it conservative and say, you know what? We're not gonna have these buildings open and we should be looking at a hard zero here for right now. If we do open, great, but, uh, I'd rather just say we're not going to.
What was the revenue? Did we have in the budget for that?
Uh, I believe it was 300 for Penfield and 125 or so for Jackie Durrell.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Calabrese? Seeing none. Got off fairly easy there, Anthony. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
You too.
Okay, we're on to our third bullet point, Parking Authority Revenue Update. Mr. Schmidt?
Okay. Uh, in discussions with the Parking Authority, they, uh, they're having a few challenges. One is, uh, obviously, the overarching challenge of lack of travel, but that's having an impact, a severe impact on their, uh, daily fees that they charge. And also the number of permits are down. And their, to a lesser extent, their rents are being affected. Uh, in talking to them, due to the fact that they do have a, you know, sizable fund balance of 1.9 million dollars, uh, that we don't expect that there would be, uh, that the subsidy from them to us is in jeopardy at all. And they're not have, they're apparently not having any cash flow problems and don't expect to have any cash flow problems.
Okay, thank you. Questions in regards to Parking Authority revenue? Seeing none. Moving on to something that's not on the agenda, well, it's not a bullet point in item number six, but you do have here in your worksheet, an explanation for the adjustment in market value of investments in the amount of 69,000?
Yes, that question came up, uh, don't remember who asked it, but there was a question about a, a line item within the munis, our munis revenue report that reflected a, uh, a drop of 69,000 in the market value of our investment. And so, uh, what that is, is it's, it's pretty much what it says it is. It's a, it's a shortfall in the value of the, of, of a number of investments, not just one single investment, but our, in our whole portfolio of investments in the, uh, market value. This, like anything, like any other investment, these, uh, values change, and they can change drastically from day to day and certainly from quarter to quarter. And so, while this one could be 69,000 now, uh, it, you know, it could be up by 300,000 next quarter or next year. Uh, so this is, uh, and so I guess what I'm trying to get at is that this is a, uh, really an accounting adjustment that we make every quarter, um, just to account for any changes in market value. The reality is that when we make these investments, we're investing for the income, uh, for the interest income that comes from them and not, not so much for the, uh, value of the investment itself.
Can you hear me? Okay. And had technical difficulties? Okay. Any questions on the market value of investments, uh, Ms. Charlton?
Can you remind us what, what we're invested in? What, what kinds of investments are these? And is this just excess cash that the town has from, you know, tax collections? What, what exactly is this?
So we, this is part of our, uh, cash pool, part of our, uh, the, the pool of all these assets that the town has on the hands. And the, we're very limited in the types of invest, investments that we can go into by, uh, by law. And so primarily, uh, you know, just to simplify things, it's, it's bonds, uh, highly rated bonds, government bonds. Uh, we, you know, we can do typical money market accounts, CDs, uh, but not, we're not allowed to, uh, invest in stocks.
And so those, you know, that's- So we have bond funds and, okay. I mean, I guess money markets wouldn't, I'm guessing, wouldn't have a change in market value though, right? So, so you said we're in bond funds, that-
That's right. I'm just, you, you asked about what we're allowed to invest. That, that's, that's one of the, one of the tools that we have at our-
Yeah, I was, I was wondering what we're invested in that's, that's accounted for at, at market value and where we have mark-to-market adjustments.
Yep, so those would be bonds.
And, okay. Are we in bond funds? Is, is that what it is?
These are individual bonds.
Okay. Individual bonds. All right.
Yep.
And, um...
And just, you know, just to give you a sense of that-
So are we? Yeah, I mean, I guess that in terms of the, the, you know, the market value becomes important if we need to use the money, right? So are these, I mean, do we liquidate these, um, for our cash needs? Or, or is this money that, you know, can you just help us understand that a little bit?
Sure. And it's, you know, it's a, a good point and something that we've been struggling with because we are, you know, we're limited in the amount of time, uh, the duration of the investments that we get into as well. So typically, we're between, uh, a year and, and, and five years with, which, well, you know, those are, those are the, the investments that we would consider more long-term for us. Um, and then there's obviously, we, we have a, a pool of money that we maintain to be sure that we can cash on hand, that we can pay the bills with. But, you know, you know, one, I think one of the things that drives the amount that we have that gets investment is the fact that we have a, a, a fund balance. And so that, you know, that, that is gonna be cash that's sitting there and that can be invested.
Yeah, I agree. I guess I was just trying to react to whether, you know, could these losses end up being realized if we have to use the money? Um, and, and not under, you know, not understanding if these are just, are these temporary investments that we will, you know, have to liquidate? And we can actually realize those, those, um, unrealized losses of 69,000? And I don't view that as an accounting entry. That's, that's the current value, right? If we had to cash out those bonds today, that would be, you know, a loss that we would realize. So I'm just trying to understand if we'd ever have to do that or if we have other funds available in money markets or, you know, interest-bearing checking accounts or whatever.
Yes. So we, we have other money available to pay the bills that's in shorter-term, uh, vehicles, like you said, money markets. And so, so I guess to answer your question more directly, it would be, I would, and I'll look at Caitlin, but, uh, I think it would be highly unlikely that we would pull, have to pull money out of one of these investments in order to pay the bills, uh, just because we, we do maintain a healthy balance, uh, in order to, in order to pay the bills. So the, you know, these were, we're counting on these being, uh, unavailable to us for the amount of time that we invest them.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm not an ex, an expert in, in, you know, fixed income, but, um, you know, I, I wonder, uh, is someone, who advises us on our strategy in terms of where to invest?
We basically have, um, like Jared said, we have some money market accounts. And we have, this 69 comprises of basically three larger investment type of, um, of investments that, that we have. So, and at those three firms, we, we utilize their expertise in the stock market and, and what's going on with the economic indicators of the world, and we, um, use their judgment. We don't typically, um, as long as I've been here, we've never really had to sell. We, um, we use our more liquid assets when cash is needed. Um, clearly, we have a quarterly collection cycle, so our cash is pretty, goes up on a hill, then it comes down and then it starts going back up again. So, um, really, for the amount of time that I've been here, this, this really is the fund balance. And like Jared said, it's, it's the cash pool. It's not just the general fund balance. It's the cash pool for all of our capital projects, all of our special revenue funds. Um, so that's what, you know, the general fund unassigned cash balance, I, I think as of last year was like 34 million. So, um, that's a large piece of these investments. So no, we wouldn't ever realize this, this loss. of these investments. So no, we wouldn't ever realize this, this loss. We, we carry to term, and then when it matures, then we figure out, okay, what's the best strategy at that point? Do we invest it again for another five years? What, what can we buy? What's the market bearing? Or are we better off, you know, doing something different into a money market account? What's going on locally with the interest rates? So a lot of it is using the expertise of those three firms, and then using also our, you know, we have people at Peoples, which is our operating bank, and we, and we use them as well to, to look at our cash daily, like our, our, our needs to figure out how to really maximize our return on our investments.
That was helpful. I think the key thing you said is that we intend to hold these to term, and that's what we typically do, right? That's what we typically have done.
Yes, and that's what we have done. We know that we could sell them. In my experience, in the last 12 to 13 years, we've, we, we haven't needed to.
We wouldn't sell them. We're just collecting whatever the coupon rate is, and when they mature, they mature. And these are high-grade investments, but because they are bonds, we have to account for them at market value, which is, which is why we have this, this loss showing. But it's, it's interesting, too, because if that, if that loss wasn't there, or if that was a gain, that's not really cash available to us, right, either? Because it would be the same thing, right?
Correct.
Unrealized.
Just to give you some history, we, we normally, we used to do this entry only at June 30. We would recognize our, our mark-to-market variance, our entry as of June 30, because as you, as you know, our balance sheet in, for every investment has to match the statement plus any accrued interest. So this is a newer entry that, that the previous CFO started, and it's, you know, it's not realized. So it's, it's a, it's a timing number. And I don't want to say it doesn't mean anything, but because we hold all of our investments to maturity, you know, this 69 wouldn't be a real number. So what we do is really look at it as of June 30.
Yeah, no, that makes sense. I guess my, my, my question or my comment was, I don't know what we budgeted in terms of investment income related to a change in market value of investments, if anything, but we shouldn't budget anything, right? Because whatever we budgeted would be a non-cash item that would not be available for us to use if, if our strategy is to just hold these bonds to maturity. The only thing that's available for us to use and to put in our budget is the interest income that we're getting in cash, right?
That's right. That's right.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you for that. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bateson?
Yeah, Jim, quick thing. I just want to follow. I think, I think Caitlin answered it. I, I never recall seeing variations in this account going through the year, but I think she answered it in that traditionally, we have just dealt this on, dealt with this on an annual basis. At the end of the year, the auditors would, you know, verify the assets, and that would result in the mark, mark-to-market. So I'm, I'm pretty, pretty comfortable with that explanation. I just think, I don't know. I think going down the road, 34 million, I heard it's $34 million investment. I, I don't want to get in anybody's sandbox, but I think that, you know, if that number, that's something that really should be managed. That that's a significant number, as opposed to just leaving that in low-yield investment. If we're restricted to that, I get it, but, you know, maybe we should visit some sort of concept of oversight on this. That's some significant dollars. That's my thought there going forward. Thanks.
Well, perhaps that's something we can ask Mr. Santafanti, because it's our undesignated fund balance. Unless, Ms. Bossi, you know the answer already?
Yes, so that 34 that I quoted is the, is the unassigned general fund balance, right, from fiscal '19, which we're kind of expecting won't increase all that much due to our transfer to OPEB. This, this mark-to-market is a piece of, so this is how we're managing that unassigned fund balance, our these investments. And we have an internal investment policy that we follow, and it is, it's extremely restricted. There's state guidelines as to what you can invest in, and it's extremely limited. So our, the three advisors that we're using at these three firms helped us with our investment policy. They're very familiar with municipal cash requirements at the state level and do this for multiple municipalities around the state of Connecticut.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further questions on this item? Okay, we're at our final bullet point for item number six, accounting for tax collections received after June 30. And we have with us tonight, our tax collector, David. Thank you for being here.
No problem.
So, you want me, you want me to talk about, I'll just talk about the accounting of it from our end of things. And the, you know, the, the question came up during the last meeting about anything that is postmarked before the July 1st, or by the July 1st deadline, which happened due to the deferrals and, and so anything that was postmarked, we booked it in the FY '20 year, in last year. And so anything beyond that, beyond the, the, anything that came in that was postmarked beyond that time was booked in FY '21.
Okay, thank you. I'll turn it over to Dave. Do you have further comments on that, on this?
Sure, just to follow up. So these are generally FY '20 payments. These are payments that were due, they became due on April 1st, but as Jared mentioned, they were deferred and could be paid timely through July 1st. So we did receive many payments on July 1st, or they were mailed on July 1st, and they're postmarked for that date. So they are considered timely, even though we were receiving them as far as, far back as seven days into July. So per the direction of the auditors, 1.5 million of that was collected as timely, even though it was processed after July 1st. So it was booked as FY '20. And then because the due date was July 1st, there were payments that we received that were postmarked after July 1st and had to be taken as late, and those were considered payments in FY '21 as prior year taxes. And that was about 1.9 million.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Mr. Walsh?
David, the $1.9 million that's going into fiscal year prior year tax, that's causing a variance, that's going to be greater than you expect for prior year taxes because it was so close to the deadline?
Yes. Well, it, it's, to be honest, it's too early to tell. As we discussed last week, right now, we are, if, if I'm looking at our prior year taxes, we're, you know, like a million two or a million three more than this time last year. But it, it could flatline, it could just stay where it is the rest of the year because we don't anticipate any additional deferments. And really, the, the increase, the unexpected increase in the prior year was a product of the deferment, the fact that the due date was on the day of the end of the fiscal year and the beginning of the next fiscal year.
Okay. That's what I was asking. So that answers the question. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Any further questions? Okay, so that's all been explained. Thank you, David, for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to the bullet points. We'll go to item number seven, but before I do, any further comments from you, Mr. Schmidt, in regards to these items, or from any board member? From you, Mr. Schmidt, or me covering?
Nothing to add.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from our board? Okay, moving on to item number seven. To hear, consider, and act upon the minutes of October 6, 2020, and November 5, 2020. Can I have a motion to put this before us? Mr. Dewitt, seconded by Mr. Metola. So these minutes are now before us. We'll take them one at a time. And the first one we will vote on is the Board of Finance regular meeting minutes from Tuesday, October 6. Any questions, comments on these minutes? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes for October 6, please say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, two abstentions, seven in favor. Ms. Leclerc and I, I understand we were not present at that meeting. For the Board of Finance, special meeting minutes Thursday, November 5, 2020. Any questions, comments on these minutes? Mr. Dewitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris Dewitt. On the, on the top of page two, there's a comment that says, Mr. Dewitt asked if people filling the retired position will have a 401K. I don't specifically remember asking that, but it should be a 401A, as we all know. So the minute should reflect A rather than K.
Right, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. So it is a 401A, as opposed to K, which is private industry. So, okay, with that change, any other comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor of these minutes, say aye.
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 Okay, it is unanimous. Okay, it leaves us to item number eight. To hear, consider, and act upon any communication. First, I'll turn it over to the administration. Anything, Mr. Schmidt, Mr. Bremer, or Ms. Bossi?
Oh, they have nothing to add.
Okay, I would like to turn this over briefly to Mr. Dewitt. If you can give us an update on our purchasing policy and how we are moving forward with the current pol- or with the policy that you're developing with Town Hall?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair, Chris Dewitt. So after our last meeting, I distributed the actual purchasing policy that I had made comments on, with, along with my comments to, through our, our clerk, Jen Carpenter, to the board. So I hope you all got that and had a chance to look at them. In parallel, Ms. Charlton and I had a, had a quick conversation with Mr. Santafani, and subsequently, I drafted a request for quotation, which then went through Mr. Foley in the purchasing department. So a request for quotation has gone to Mr. Santafani to, to give us an estimate of how much he and his firm would charge us to work with us in developing a whole set of purchasing policies. And Ms. Charlton helped me on that a lot. So I appreciate her and thank her for that. Just this evening, Ms. Charlton heard from Mr. Santafani, and we're hopeful to get at least the first cut at what that number might be for an estimate by tomorrow. Am I correct, Ms. Charlton?
Yes. Mr. Santafani, Santafanti intagated that he would provide a range of a fee, and in order to get that a little sharper, it's going to just take him some time. He's got to do a little bit of work upfront and ask some more questions of the administration in, in terms of, you know, what else they've done to date in terms of working on the policy. So he understands that, you know, it can't be a wide range, and if it is, he'll, he'll do some more homework before he gives us a number. But we do expect that we'll have something in the next day or so.
Yeah, thank you. I, I'd forgotten about the range. So we had asked if there was any possibility of getting us a number so we could give you a rough order of magnitude tonight, and it, it didn't happen. And, and he, again, he's working right with Mr. Foley. So through, using our request for quotation process. So more, more to come, maybe we can, well, I'm, in fact, I'm sure we'll have a number for our 10th, you know, the 10th meeting, if, if we even want to bring it up. I know that's kind of a busy night, but that's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dewitt. I, I think, you know, towards the, at the end of that meeting, if you have more information, we should hear it, so we can move this along. Okay, well, thank you for that update. I do have a couple items I'd like to review before we sign off tonight. The first one is in regards to our Board of Finance committees, of which we have four. We have the Fund Balance Committee, which is chaired by Mr. Walsh. We have the Budget Committee, which is chaired by Mr. Dewitt. We have Purchasing Policy, which you just heard, chaired by Mr. Dewitt, and, and Ms. Charlton is on that committee. And we have the Audit Committee, which is chaired by Ms. Leclerc, and Ms. Charlton is on that committee as well. So we want to fill these committees up because we want to prepare ourselves for our 2021 budget, and we'll need information from these committees. If you could, you know, you can think about it, unless you, you want to raise your hand tonight, think about which committee you would like to be part of, and then we can start our, our work. And I'll send you all an email. I'll ask you to let me know which committees you would like to join, and then the chairs will contact you, and we can move forward. Again, that's the fund balance, budget, purchasing policy, and the audit. Any comments, questions? Okay, last item is we, we have, as you know, a working capital meeting December 10th, which is a week from Thursday. And since we met last week, we have been invited to a site visit to the former Giant Steps property in Southport. The town is interested, as we know, in purchasing this property, this former Giant Steps property. There is a deadline for the town to authorize this purchase, which is at the end of the year. Apparently, there's three other bidders that are interested. So therefore, there's going to be some special meetings that are going to be held, and the Board of Finance will be one of them. Ms. Cupjack, you can correct me, but I think I have my dates right. The Board of Selectmen will hear the, hear but not act on the potential purchase of this property on December 7th, hear and act on December 14th. The RTM is having a special committee meeting on December 17th, which is that following Thursday, and they are going to set up a special meeting on December 21st to vote if it gets that far, right? So therefore, the Board of Finance will need to have a special meeting in regards to this potential purchase, December 15th or 16th, which is a Tuesday or a Wednesday, two weeks, two weeks from today or two weeks from tomorrow. And we will set that up. And I just ask you to be prepared, if possible, I know it's late notice, to be available on one of those two dates. I'm personally leaning, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to hear some feedback, leaning towards a Wednesday, so we can have a full couple of days to listen to the Board of Selectmen meeting, ask questions, and, and then have our meeting on the 16th. Okay? That is all I had. Any comments, questions? Ms. Marmian?
Thank you. I just have a follow-up. In addition to the update on the purchasing policy, which I appreciated hearing about tonight, we had asked about the recommendations coming out of the audit. And I know Mr. Bremer was going to present those to us. It's my understanding that the Audit Committee was looking at those first. Can they just give us a brief update? I think they, they talked about it this evening. Just a brief update in terms of where are we with those recommendations in general? And then when will the full board hear those recommendations?
Okay, so Ms. Marmian, thank you for that. The reason I didn't bring that up is because we had the meeting tonight at 6 o'clock, and we got through about 8:00. we got through about eight recommendations out of, how many, 40, 50?
75, 75.
So, so we, 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 you know, some thorough questions were asked, so we didn't get too far into this, so there's really not much of an update. We, we're going to meet again, the Audit Committee will meet again on January 5th and we'll go from there. But however, Ms. Leclerc, Ms. Charlton, um, do you have anything you'd like to update our board on?
No, I think that's it. Maybe we can talk among ourselves and determine if there's a, a better way to do this, um, ask our questions, because I think if we're going to do this an hour at a, a time during meetings that are several months apart, we're never going to get through it, so.
Right, it'll be, it'll be budget 2022, right? So we'll, um.
And I, and I think a lot of it is just asking questions and, and getting a, a more fulsome understanding and, and then understanding the, um, the timeframe of some of the recommendations because several of the responses indicated that things were in process or they would be done or they were partially done. So I, I think getting a, a better understanding of that would be helpful and then we can, once we figure, if we can figure out how to do that, we can, I think, get, get something before the full board, um, more quickly than if we just try to do this at each upcoming Audit Committee. So I know we haven't talked about that, sorry, Mary and Jim, that's just, that was my thought.
Well, I think it's, I think you're, you're on something there. We can't just meet four or five times a year, we'll never get through this for an hour, an hour and a half. So we'll have to figure out a better way to, uh, go through these recommendations and the committee will get back to the rest of the board on how we'll move forward with that. And then we'll get a presentation, um, one of our regular meetings in January, let's say, let's, let's shoot for February at the latest.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
If I could just jump in on the audit stuff, you know, obviously, I hired a new interim DPW director with a wealth of experience, longtime person who has an extraordinary amount of experience and he's read the audit report and obviously, he just started, his full week was Monday. So he's getting, you know, he's getting his sea legs and he's digging in pretty diligently. So I think he'll be, um, very helpful to us. And obviously, the town, uh, we have Mr. Bremer, who's been working on all this stuff. These are things we're going to do anyway, um, regardless of the Board of Finance's Audit Committee, but we are working through these things as well internally. And we had invited the Board of Finance to have a liaison. Unfortunately, Mary wasn't a lot, uh, available to really come to the majority of the meetings, but we have been having those meetings and have been working through that and, and it, in a, in an effort to obviously get through this stuff and put policies in place, um, to make sure, and I think one of the biggest policies is just have oversight over the people that work for the town, um, and make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Um, but I, I'm looking forward to Bucky being able to, uh, jump in as soon as he's gotten, uh, you know, gotten a little time under his belt. So I think that'll be enormously helpful.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cupjack. Anything else from the board? Okay, on to item number nine, which is to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Mr. Testani, seconded by Mr. DeWitt, all those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. Uh, good night, everybody, and we'll see you next Thursday.